Good morning, everyone. It's 10 o'clock. As we try to assemble the committee of the whole, which is ultimately our regularly scheduled criminal justice meeting, we're going to give council members a few minutes to get settled. We'll get all of our guests and the press a few minutes to get settled. And we're going to respect everyone's time and try to start the meeting as soon as possible. He loves his seat, man. It's a seat thing now. It's a seat thing. Do you love your seat, Joe? It fits your tush? Madam Curran, roll call, please.
Roll call. Councilmember Morell, councilmember Moreno, councilmember Geruso, councilmember Harris, councilmember King, councilmember Green, councilmember Thomas.
Present.
We have five members. We have a forum.
Since it's a committee of the whole, we have five members present. We are not going to belabor this. We're going to respect the public's time and your time as much as possible. Roll call has been done. Approval of the minutes of the April 7th, 2025 criminal justice meeting, moved by councilman Morell, seconded by councilmember Moreno. All in favor?
Aye.
Ayes have it, so ordered. Item three, Ms. Curran.
We have contracts for consideration per council rule 57. The first one is a memorandum of understanding among the city of New Orleans, the DA's office, sheriff's office, and SUNO for Title IX coordinator.
Moved by councilmember Morell, seconded by councilmember Moreno. All in favor?
Aye.
Ayes have it, so ordered. Next item?
Amendment number two to the professional services agreement between the city and Travelers Aid for case management services for the city's law enforcement assisted division.
Moved by councilmember Green, seconded by the chair. All in favor?
Aye.
Ayes have it, so ordered.
Now, we've got the discussion regarding the escape of the inmates from the Orleans Justice Center.
Before I start as criminal justice chair, council president Morell, also in working with the committee, we thought it was best to do this as a committee of the whole. Councilmember Morell, any comments to open this meeting before we start it formally?
No, I want to thank Chairman Thomas for allowing us to kind of take this existing meeting. It's very hard to try and get the chambers on the schedule. I think it's a really important issue. It's worthy of significant public discussion. I do want to make the committee aware, I do have a, I have to find, I have a statement from LSP. They are not present, but they did respond to questions in writing regarding when they were notified on the timeline. I'll make that available at the appropriate time.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Before we get into the, first of all, greetings and good day to everyone. Thank you, everyone who came here, so we can have this very important discussion. Before we get into today's meeting, I want to speak directly and I want to speak plainly, hopefully in a way, or definitely in a way, that people expect from us, and so that folk watching or keeping track of this will understand. What happened at the Orleans Parish Justice Center was indeed very serious, and in many cases, and frankly, it was unacceptable that it happened. Ten individuals escaped from our jail, so let that sink in. Ten. When you look at some of the whole season about history, one of the most worst events, we're talking about prison escape, that's happened in a very long time. And unfortunately, several are still out there on the street. I'm thinking about the families that were impacted by the crimes that were committed, the families that are impacted by the fact that they are running our streets, especially with the crimes that they were charged with. And I'm thinking about the neighborhoods that are not harboring them, but the neighborhoods where they've taken up space, where in many cases, just their presence creates an unease and potential threat to the folk who live in those neighborhoods. And I'm thinking about the people in the city who are wondering how this could happen, and why did it happen, and how it relates to all of us, those of us involved, especially on our watch. Now, this isn't a time for politics and finger pointing. This meeting today is about action. How do we come together? How do we answer questions, questions that should be answered? And how do we put solutions in place so that it won't happen again? Our focus right now should be twofold: supporting the efforts to bring these individuals and what our chief and law enforcement agencies are doing back into custody, and to make immediate changes to ensure that this has the slightest, most minute probability that it'll ever happen again. We know the jail hasn't changed structurally. We know that our sheriff has talked about problems at the jail, but what happened shows that the risk is still there. And we can't afford to wait for another headline, another embarrassment, to deal with this issue moving forward. This committee is here today to work with urgency and purpose. We're not here to bash or disrespect anyone, but we will get to the bottom of it. We will speak truthfully, and the public deserves answers. And even more than that, they deserve results. So, thank you. I want to thank everybody, and let's have a fruitful, good meeting. Chief?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As you know, because this is a standing committee, I had come to address other matters, which is a basic PowerPoint on issues that probably are not in the public's mind right now. Do you want me to actually go through this PowerPoint that has nothing to do with the...
You could actually, and for the public who's watching, this is our standard criminal justice meeting, so there were criminal justice agencies that were prepared to give their report while we have the special meeting that's been called by our council president. What you can do, out of respect for the moment, and thank you for that, is maybe give a brief or give a public update as to where you are on this issue.
Okay. Let me, let me then just go ahead. I know this was agendized, so I will run through this very briefly, so we can get to the more important issue that the community is concerned about. So, as the public knows, this is a standing committee meeting in which we give an update of what's happening in our agency. So, let me address a few things for the public to know. I believe all of you already know, but about a month ago, two months ago, when we made promotions in the department, we did a small reorganization. The major reorganization impact is that, to my right, Chief Hans Gantier actually became a true number two in the department. So, he took on a new title and a new role as assistant superintendent. The deputy superintendent rank now has just been cleaned up with deputy superintendents over bureaus. We don't have any other deputy superintendent unless they are over a bureau. You're also aware that we've made now promotions for two more majors that were added to our rank. You can see from this quick org chart where they are now assigned. Two of the majors have been assigned to the patrol division, which we call FOB, and one of the majors has now been reassigned to the investigative unit. Then we have, we're going to come back to the escape issue. Let me just jump to the updates. Everyone knows that we are now moved into the new headquarters, which is the DXC building on Poitres. The records unit and the NCIC unit has now made that move since we gave you a last update. There are only two other units in the old building, which is Fleet and IT, and they are scheduled for their move out of that building at the end of this month. There is an issue that has come up regarding the crime lab and the DNA floor. That's really for a more in-depth conversation another time, but there are some recommendations that there's going to have to be adjustment to the architectural footprint to make the DNA lab work. You can just see, I'm not going to read the PowerPoint to you, but there has been improvement on HVAC systems in all of the districts that are listed up there, including our evidence and property room and our crime lab. Everybody is aware of the crime trends that have been going down. The graphs speak for themselves. So, we've got our person crimes over time and our property crimes over time. We still continue on a trend downward. We've obviously had a spike this month in May. When you see this type of graph here, which is murder over time, you'll notice large peaks and deep valleys. The reason for that is because the numbers are small. So, when you have a change in the raw number, those peaks and valleys are going to look way more severe, but it's because numbers are small. Then we know about our fatal shootings. Our fatal shootings are down approximately 63% as compared to last year. And then you saw our non-fatal shootings are down 25%, armed robberies down 22%, auto thefts down 42%, vehicle burglaries down 26%. The only real area that has, continues to creep up over time is shoplifting. Some of that is due to company policies, such as they are not to call the police until after the perpetrator has left the store. So, that's going to impact our ability to get some of our shoplifters into, make them accountable. Our violent crime strategy is a strategy that we've been operating and building upon since I got here, but is a strategy that NOPD did utilize many years ago, and all we've done is kind of rebirth it and put a lot more attention and focus on it. We have called this strategy GRIP, and even when we leave today, we're going straight to a violent crime strategy meeting. We coupled that with the district attorney's office approach called No Dice, and that two-legged approach has made huge impacts of driving crime down. Obviously, we are enhancing our technology. We have two new systems that are coming online: Peregrine, which we already have up and going already, ShotSpotter, we're piloting in the 5th District. ShotSpotter, you know, New Orleans had many years ago, and we are piloting it again to see if it can be a force multiplier on gun violence in this city. Recruitment has continued to be a main issue to us. I do have a new captain over the recruiting unit, and she started at the first of this month. We're going to revamp our recruiting campaign, maybe use a recruiting firm. Regardless, we're seeing some improvement. We do have about 45-plus recruits in training right now. That would be an add-on to our, right now, complement of around 900 officers, and everyone knows the goal is 1,200 sworn officers. So, you can see our recruiting efforts here. For the sake of time and other matters, I'm not going to read that email to you or that PowerPoint. We continue to hire civilians, and they have been a great way of better utilizing our resources. That's really it. You can see our numbers there, and then we can always go back at this point, unless, when you're ready to have a more thorough conversation about the escape.
Councilmember?
Just on your presentation, I wanted to make one quick point. I know that Councilman Freddie King could not be here due to a prior scheduling conflict, but I know that he has been a huge advocate for increased efforts with NOPD to do recruiting from high school. So, seeing the response from the New Orleans Military Academy is very heartening, and anything that we can do to heighten that, because obviously, being an officer is a calling, and it's important for us to make sure that as young people are deciding which professions they would consider going into, I think that making NOPD on the forefront of one of those potentials would be fantastic. Continue to do that.
So, you can see it is that pilot program, and this is our pipeline. So, it's out of the cadet program that we were able to get up and started, and it's working. And we have 17 students from MLK, and four students are actually looking to be recruits for us.
Thank you.
Chief, on that point, you know, I think there are five or six principles of recruiting that superintendents always talk about, youth, whether it's cadet programs or youth engagement, schools, universities. But one of the main things I think I saw was one or two at attending the chief's conference once, was the officers that are already on the force. They're one of the main tools that are used around the country to recruit. How, what are we, how are we using our existing officers and...
Well, you know, you are 100% correct. Officers themselves are the best recruiters. If each one would just reach one, we would double the size of our organization. We do pay a premium bonus to officers if they actually are the source of a recruiting, of a person who applies. They're given an opportunity to say, who recruited you? It could be, it could be Chief Gantier, and we do pay a premium to that officer for recruiting.
Thank you. Any other question on any other issue? And we allowed the chief to go first, especially so that she can get back to, any other statements from anyone else at the desk? Councilmember Green?
Yes, Mr. Chair, if I may just comment. On Saturday evening, I received a call from someone who had the unfortunate issue of someone knocking on their door and running away, and then they came back and knocked on their door. I was able to call the 5th District, and we got an immediate response. I appreciate that fact. On Sunday morning, I was at the 3rd District at 7:00 a.m. because unfortunately, someone reported an armed robbery. The response was immediate, and they went to the scene and did an investigation. I just want to say that in general to those who are seated at the table. There are a variety of reasons that our crime rate has gone down the way it has gone down, but one of the things that has to be recognized is the response of the members of the New Orleans Police Department, the professionalism, the engagement with our community, and the sincerity that you show on matters that are of grave concern to our citizens. We're not anywhere where we need to be. There's absolutely too much crime in the city, but I think the members of our community are feeling comfortable with the level of response, the involvement that you have in our community. I go to many meetings, and I see members of the New Orleans Police Department there. As part of this presentation, I just want to say to you, thank you to all the officers of the NOPD. We're moving in the right direction, and I appreciate the work that you do. Thank you.
Councilmember Geruso, Moreno, councilman. Lastly, some of the employees that talked about the HVAC systems, we know there are automatic shut-offs at a lot of the major buildings, and they work on certain shifts. Have you guys worked that piece out so that, especially moving into a new building, that's been working on a certain schedule, so that when they shut off, that many of the civilian employees are there on the other floors, that they still have access to the HVAC system, because that's been a problem?
I'm going to let you go ahead and speak to that, Chief Landry.
Yes. We are working on the issue with DPM. We had a solution last year, but the funding was a concern, so hopefully we'll have something in place for this, this summer.
Thank you, Chief Landry. Any closing comments, Chief?
No, sir. Thank you, as always, for letting us give you an update about where we are as an agency.
Thank you, and we'll do something more detailed at the next criminal justice meeting. You know, you meet with council members individually anyway, so thank you for allowing us at least to slip you in, so we can have the rest of this meeting.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Madam Clark?
We're on the same item. I don't know if...
Hang on. I'm sorry.
Councilmember Moreno?
I'm sorry. I thought it was just the end of her presentation, and then she was going to talk about the situation with the...
Yeah, okay, yeah. I had asked her to do that in, in the beginning. I asked you to also weigh in on the meeting here also. I don't know if you, I don't know if you, you know, you want to weigh in or not, but based on what the hearing is, initially, I said you can give your presentation and also weigh in on the situation that this community is faced with now.
Sure. So, our very, we have one mission, one mission only, and that is to recapture these inmates, these escapees, as I think the community knows by now. But just in case they do not know, we do have four now back into custody. We put all hands on deck, and they remain all hands on deck. We also work with our partners, as you know. I will tell you that the Louisiana State Police is the lead agency, because, you know, obviously, we're here to support our sheriff and to support anything that we can be as a partner in this. The greatest impact, obviously, is New Orleans, because this is where the escapees ended up, and all four escapees that we've recaptured have been within the city limits. So, of course, NOPD is probably the most impacted of the law enforcement agencies, because they're still within, most of them that we believe are still within the city limits. But we actually are a support agency in terms of who's the lead.
And if you could explain, explain to the public, given this is your jurisdiction, why is the state agency taking the lead on a city issue?
Sure. So, the situation is that the jail is, is the sheriff's. It's not, it's not a city jail, so it's not the New Orleans Police Jail. It is a sheriff's parish jail. The inmates, however, are state custody. They are state custody. That's why, when they're recaptured, they are state prisoners. Because of that, they will be state police. It doesn't really matter who is the agency who captures the escapee. It can be NOPD, it could be Kenner, it could be Slidell, it could be St. Bernard, it could be U.S., you know, Marshals, you name the agency. It's not who's going to do the capture, but once the escapee is recaptured, they are handed over to the state police, because the prisoners are state police. They are not ours. The impact is New Orleans, for the most part. But when it comes to jurisdiction, we all got the same mission, one mission. We're all a team, and it is to capture them and get them into custody. Once they are taken into custody, they are going to be sent to a state penitentiary. They will not go back into the Orleans Parish prison at this time.
Councilmember Morell?
Yeah, I have two very specific questions. The first is, when was NOPD notified of the escape?
I'm going to give context before I give you just a pinpoint. The couple of the chiefs, about four of us, were in my office having a meeting about a different matter. A captain called us. A captain said that he had heard through the Fusion Center that there had been escapees, and did we know about it? None of us knew. We quickly kind of looked at each other and said, I don't, let's verify this. One of the other chiefs picked up the phone and said, well, it's in the media. So, it was at this time that we were notified, but we were notified through our captain.
And do you know what time roughly that was?
It was around 10:30.
Around 10:30? Okay. And so, you as superintendent were not directly communicated with, by the sheriff that there was an escape?
I directly made a telephone call, and the sheriff did take my call.
After you found out through the, through the captain?
Yes, I called immediately. I made, I did three things immediately. I, once that was confirmed, I believe Chief Gantier tried to call Chief Goodley. I immediately asked for our PIO director, Reese Harper, Officer Harper, to come to my office, because I wanted to get in front of the media as soon as possible to notify the, the community. I also made an immediate call to the mayor. She took the call as well, picked up immediately. So, within the first five minutes, we were having this rolling out and calling the sheriff. At the same time, she took my call, confirmed, and we just said, okay, well, we, we want to get this, this going, and we're here to help.
I ask that because, as you know, when it comes to the rearrest of someone who has left the sheriff's campus, it is imperative that post-certified officers who have that arrest and authority be involved in that, and the amount of post-certified officers at your disposal versus the sheriff's disposal is a significant magnitude. So, I think it's concerning. I appreciate that she took your call, but I also am a little concerned that you didn't get a call. I think that's something we'll... concerned that you didn't get a call. I think that's something we'll address when she comes up. I do think also additionally, I want to get kind of your impression. Obviously, LSP is the lead agency on this case. They've been a partner with Troop NOLA. In your estimation, has having the state agency here in any way impeded your efforts to coordinate with all the local authorities and local organizations to have this pursuit take place?
Not at all. We have been very good partners. We're going to continue to be very good partners. And so there's not been an impediment in any kind of way. If anything, it's been a very, very effective and good partnership.
Okay. That's, that's all my questions. Councilmember Thomas, after the NOPD is done, I have the LSP statement, but I'll do that before the sheriff comes up. Thank you.
We're trying to get these monitors up. I know, yeah, so, yeah, it's a whole, whole new world. Councilmember Moreno?
Thank you. Chief, there's been questions about witnesses, victims out there. Who is coordinating efforts to try to ensure that there's protection for our victims and witnesses?
Well, for those who are in our jurisdiction, we also pretty quickly recognize there's a safety risk to specific people, victims, witnesses, judges, things like that. So things that were within our jurisdiction, we tried to be very proactive. Even as you know, on Friday, we were very proactive about, we were going to have patrol cars at the, our schools. We wanted to be sure our children were, and our parents knew that we were there. I mean, things like that. So anything within our jurisdiction that we had some control over, we just, we just did it. And then we are talking with each other. Sheriff's Office is talking with us. Everybody's talking together. So if something is within our area, we're trying to take the lead, to do the call and the knock on the door. And we've moved some people for their safety. We've helped them with that. The constable stepped up to say he could take care of helping the judges who were concerned. So we're very much a team in those.
Well, I just want to, you know, really thank you for, for the, for the level of work and coordination that your department has really demonstrated. I was at the Unified Command Center over the weekend and certainly saw your, your leadership and your officers there. When it came to, you know, obviously, you all communicating with the public, you know, I knew, I know Reese was on top of it. You guys were on social media. What was the coordination with NOLA Ready? And I see Colin here. Tell me about the steps that, that NOLA Ready took, because we didn't see that NOLA Ready alert until later in the afternoon. So while you all, NOPD and law enforcement was out there saying things as soon as you found out, like, what was the coordination with NOLA Ready?
Thank you for the question. We found out at NOLA Ready at about 2:00 p.m. My public information officer then got with NOPD's public information officer, also tried to call Sheriff's Public Information, did not get a call back. As soon as we had a conversation with NOPD about whether or not an alert at that point, given the, the timeframe that had passed and the extensive media coverage that was ongoing, NOPD indicated that they still believed there would be a value in sending out that message, and we sent out that message. And then further, we've determined that as any new information comes about, including arrests and any other information, that the public needs to know that we'll send those out immediately.
So Homeland Security, NOLA Ready hadn't seen any of the media alerts or anything coming in around 11:00, 11:30?
I can't speak for everyone in the office. I am working with my team right now. My, my indication is no. I, I will say that these last two weeks and the next two weeks are part of the busiest part of our year with getting ready for hurricane season. We were all, there wasn't anyone in the office until probably about noon, doing different exercises, drills, and meetings with stakeholders for hurricane season last Friday.
Yeah, I think, you know, this is probably another opportunity for when there are this level of public safety emergencies, to do a coordinated approach that, you know, that NOLA Ready, Homeland Security is part of, you know, getting the word out. If we're getting word out to other law enforcement agencies, media, things like that, to include Homeland Security and NOLA Ready. Okay. Thank you.
Chief, what's the role of the Criminal Justice Coordinating Council? That whole Sandy Krassnoff coordinating council, I think that every part of the criminal justice system is a part of. Is there a role in coordinating in terms of response, emergencies, working together? Those things aren't discussed?
Well, that is headed by Commissioner Tanisha Stevens. And so the role there is really more almost administrative in terms of grant coordination of the criminal justice system, what would be available for us over, a lot of attention over juvenile justice issues, things of that nature. Not necessarily a strategic player, rollout responses that are operational on the ground.
Now, I'm, I just asked that because I remember early on, several years ago, it was, the question was about coordination.
Sure, sure.
And in many cases, the lack of coordination amongst our criminal justice system that sometimes it was like a Laurel Hardy movie, who's on first, right? And one of the things the DA and the police department and systems, judges talked about was notifications, communication, being able to log in to find out who, what, where, when, and how. So it would seem to me like this would be part of that, that should have, when you talk about coordinating, you know, just like you want to coordinate daily activities, you definitely want to be coordinated in, in an emergency. So, so maybe this is another role or something that could be, because why call it a coordinating agency, a system, a committee, if it's not coordinated? So maybe this is just another thing we may take a look at moving forward. Because several years ago, each talked about being able to log into the system to find out what was going on in case something was happening.
If I may, for the public who may not have context, that is not an NOPD unit or division. That is a city separate division, if you will, or department. And so sometimes people think NOPD has all of those kind of functions, when we're actually not under the same umbrella in terms of it's not New Orleans Police.
Okay. That's the different branches of the system sitting at the table.
Right. It's a city unit, if you will.
Thank you. Anything else for Chief? Oh, Councilmember Jerusale? I'm sorry.
I was just, I was going to ask very quickly, and I don't know if it's at this table, Chief and Colin, you discussed the Fusion Center, the communication coming from them. If something goes to the Fusion Center, how does that get dispersed? So, for example, if Colin doesn't hear back, it would seem like the Fusion Center should then be distributing to all the partners so they would know.
So the Fusion Center is actually a separate entity as well. It's an independent entity. It is housed in Baton Rouge, and it's a state all crimes center, where it doesn't matter what agency or city or town or in the state of Louisiana. They can feed into one hub called the Fusion Center, information about armed robbery that maybe occurred in Buckalooza. It could be about a series of carjackings in Slidell or whatever. And they can feed that information into the hub, into the center called a Fusion Center. And then that team of analysts sends that information out broadly to law enforcement around the state. So all the law enforcement agencies get that information. So in this particular situation, of course, they're going to, they're going to feed the information about the escape and the escapees into the Fusion Center, and that will be disseminated throughout the state. And most, every state in our nation has a Fusion Center. And then from Fusion Center to Fusion Center, the information is pushed out around the country.
Does the information from a Fusion Center go to just NOPD chief, or does it go to sheriff's office, to City Hall? I just want to make sure everybody who gets a communication from the Fusion Center, is law enforcement?
You know, different Fusion Centers are different in every state. So I'm going to let our chief, who may know, I was the executive director of the Fusion Center in the state of Washington. But it may operate a little bit differently than Louisiana's. So go ahead.
So every agency has a representative in the Fusion Center, and that representative usually is the person that will reach out to their different agencies for anything that's important to know, such as we had an escapee. That representative kind of like let our captain, who's familiar with the Fusion Center, who used to work there prior to being promoted to captain, that's who they reached out to, and that captain reached out to us. Every agency has a representative of the Fusion Center to be able to relay that sort of information.
Yeah. Also, I want to clarify, because I know everybody kind of fax checks things. I was the chief of police who was assigned, not as an employee, to the Fusion Center. I was the representative of the police chiefs to the Fusion Center. So I want to make sure there's a understanding. I was not an employee. I was the executive chair as a representative to the Fusion Center in the state of Washington.
Thank you.
Councilmember Morel?
Could I add one thing to this last question?
Charlotte?
My office was not notified by the Fusion Center. One of the things that I think we should look at is that when it is a law enforcement specific operation, it goes to dedicated law enforcement agencies. My agency is not a law enforcement agency. We do receive, we have great communication with Fusion Center on weather and on special events and other things. However, in this situation, it probably went directly only to certified law enforcement.
Colin, are you part of the Court, Krassnoff Coordinating Committee?
No.
You're not part of that. That's why I'm saying, I ask the question, because at some point, maybe we need to rethink what communication and coordination is, especially since several years ago, several of the agencies talked about how to better communicate and disseminate information amongst each other. So it's time maybe to get back to the drawing board and kind of rethink how that works. Councilmember Morel?
Yeah, just before you go, Chief, I wanted to read. So I have a, I asked specifically of LSP, the timeline question. And I think it actually kind of dovetails nicely with what your, what your notification was. According, this is from Captain Russell Graham, who is the Public Affairs Commander for LSP. Louisiana State Police was informed of the prison escape at 10:03 a.m. on Friday, March 16th, 2025. Troop NOLA, the Fugitive Apprehension Unit, LSP Fusion Center, SWAT, air support, and several sections within the Bureau of Investigation were immediately employed. LSP was also in contact with our local, state, and federal partners. Troop NOLA mobilized within minutes, actively searching and pursuing leads. Within hours, LSP would eventually deploy over 200 troops in various roles to work alongside more than a dozen of partner agencies. LSP has assumed the lead on the fugitive apprehension aspect of this investigation, and efforts up to this point have been successful due to the massive support of our partner agencies, public input, and Crime Stopper tips. So to your point, LSP found out at 10:03, your captain found out, and the Fusion Center around the same window. So the reason why I'm asking everybody when they heard is we're trying to establish the timeline of when this was disseminated in a, in a way that other agencies could act. So I appreciate all of your comments. I know you're with OPCD, correct? So the reason why I asked OPCD to be here is, part of the challenge is that when you have that delay in time and delay in tips, I'm assuming that you guys weren't given notice, nor did you receive any tips or any calls from anyone regarding the fugitive escape up to that point, right?
No, we didn't. We didn't. We received media, information from the media around 10:30ish.
Okay. I just, it's just because when we talk about, Councilman Thomas's point, when all the agencies have the information in front of them, when you have groups like Colin giving information to push out to the public, the public typically uses what they have on hand before you have tip lines established, before anything else. The moment the public is aware that there is a break, they're going to call 911, they're going to call 311, and they're going to say, I saw somebody doing something suspicious. Because the public as a whole, when they are aware of a problem, they're not going to take the time to educate themselves on what's the tip line. And so the reason why I asked OPCD to be here is that because there was no dissemination of the public that there was an incident, we lost the opportunity to have those calls that you would have fielded, which would have fed back into the criminal justice system, fed back to NOPD, fed back to Fusion Center, fed back to LSP, to potentially apprehend these people. Thank you for being here today.
Thank you.
Yeah. Councilmember Green is next. But to add in terms, Chief, you said your captain was called at 10:30 or 10, 10:30?
About that time, yes.
Okay, so that's about a 27-minute lapse between State Police and you being notified. Okay, just to kind of go along with what's being said right now.
Right. And he just called to say, had we heard?
Gotcha.
And that he had, he'd gotten the information through the Fusion Center.
Okay. Councilmember Green?
Chief, your officers are right now involved with the very involved process of trying to find those who have perpetured, who have escaped from prison. Also, sheriff's officers and state police are out there in large numbers. In some instances, it's likely that they've been divided, that they've been separated from other things that they could be doing. I, I'm going to ask you to be a bit redundant. Could you speak to those, especially in light of the fact that the fourth person who was captured today was captured in a home, at a house?
Yes.
Could you speak, I'm asking you to be redundant. I know you've said it, but this is a forum to say it. Can you speak to those who are harboring those hardened criminals?
Right.
Who are preventing them from being apprehended, and who are therefore putting the public at risk and putting their own family members at risk by harboring those criminals? Could you send a message to them, please?
Well, we have tried to send a message to those who could, who are participating in harboring. It's not too late to change course. If you will work with us, we will work with you, obviously. We do not want anyone hurt. And we don't particularly want them hurt. We don't want the escapees hurt. We don't want our officers hurt, no one. It can be done if they have participating because they're scared. You can change course. You can let us know, and we can help you. But I will tell you, if they participate willfully and knowingly, they are going to be charged with serious felonies. They're going to spend time, because we're going to find them. We will find these escapees. We will find those who helped. So again, we would rather you change course than you can. But we don't want anyone harmed. Please call Crime Stoppers if you want to anonymously report. Get the word to us. But Crime Stoppers is 504-822-1111. There is $20,000 for each escapee. And that's cash, folks. We don't need your name. We just want your information. And so you it's, you have one of two choices. You can either choose prison, because we are going to catch you and charge you, or you can cooperate, even if you're scared. We can help you. They can change course. For those who are the escapee, you are going to be taken into custody. So let's just do it now. And let's do it in a way where no one has to get hurt. And, and let's get going on with those. But, you know, the good Lord knows where they're hiding, and we're going to find out where that is too, pretty soon.
Thank you. It's important to emphasize that people can report anonymously, but that eventually, they're going to get caught. And at the end of the day, there are going to be severe penalties for those who harbor those who are out there right now who have escaped. Those are very dangerous individuals. They're accused of murder. They're accused of strangulation and the like. They are not people to live in your home while you think that this is going to go down, that, that this is going to pass over. It's not going to pass over. We're going to find them.
Right.
Thank you.
Councilmember Moreno?
Sorry, just a quick follow up. So kind of a technical question, and I'm assuming that around 10 o'clock, when you received notice that there were these escapees, that you all then received mugshots, information on the suspects? Is that how it went down?
We, we did, you know, of course, ask for all that information.
And that was 10:30, correct?
About 10:30. We, of course, asked them, one of the very first things we're going to want. Who is the escape? What are they looking like? Let's get the word out to the public as soon as possible. You know, the public is a partnership in this as well. And so the actual operations side of how we got the information, we're going to get it, but the sheriff's cooperating. Y'all don't give the, give her the impression that she didn't. It, it takes time for them to get all that data put together and get it out. So she got it to us as soon as we could. I don't know, Chief, if you, he's more the, into the operations down into that type of, go ahead, Chief, if you know how that rolled out.
As soon as we received the information, we disseminated it to all our district captains, all our bureaus, and also we activated our violent offender warrant squad, which are the experts in finding fugitives. So one of the things that we did was immediately analyze.
Did you get all of the mugshots and information right at 10:30-ish?
No, we did not. That's something, they were still being worked on, and we finally got, I believe our PIO contacted theirs, and we were able to get that. contacted theirs and we were able to get that information out. And as soon as we received it, we sent that out in an email as well to our folks.
Because I'm trying to figure out, so you find out at 10:30, it's hard to go find somebody that you don't know what they look like and who they are.
That's correct.
So if, if you get the information, if you get notice at 10:30, I'm just trying to figure out, what was the time lapse before you actually knew who you were out there looking for?
I think, to answer that, I think I did a presser around 11, about 11:20, I'd say, just because it took time to get media to the office, I know they were already over at their sheriff's office. By then, I think we had a full list name, I believe we had a full list of the names at that.
Did you have the, the mugshot so you could see what they, if you saw them out in the public?
Top of my head, Councilwoman Moreno, I know that they were collecting all that information. I think we had names, is my understanding.
Because from what I recall, I don't think that the mugshots, so that people, if they were driving and saw someone or out and about, I don't think that those were released to the public until around 1:30. But I would have just assumed that law enforcement would have had all of that information by much, much, much earlier, like as soon as you received notice, but you're telling me that's not the case?
No, we got the call at 10:30, that takes a little while for us to kind of get all that information coordinated, but I know the sheriff got it to us as soon as she could, and we, we just began operationalizing exactly what we needed. I, I wanted to get information out to the public before I even had necessarily names yet, because I think they needed to know. And the mayor, and the ju, excuse me, the sheriff was out there before I even, I was giving that information out. So you know, we were trying to get the information out to the public.
Got it. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Chief. We have one card that was filled out for this section of the agenda, Ms. Renata Collins.
Good morning, my name is Renata Collins. At 3701 Conti Street. I've been sitting here listening to everything that's going on. First, I want to say thank you guys for all the efforts that you've been putting in place. As a community person that lives here in the city of New Orleans, I think about the disconnect that we experience. And I think that what could have been put in place and should be put in place, and if you guys haven't considered, is something like an Amber Alert. Because had I not got the call from my uncle who said, hey, go into your office and lock the door, I would have never been made aware of what was going on. But I know that when children are adopted and things of that nature, we can utilize cell phones like we use for hurricanes and tornadoes and all those things, maybe we need to consider having an Amber Alert, not just between us, but through even your department too, so that we can have a more speedy and fast recovery. Because our, our safety is totally important. The next thing I question is too, is do some of the partnerships that we do have, like with the Louisiana State Police Department and everyone else, is it making us too soft that we're not being aware of what we doing and our total responsibility as law enforcement? So I don't want us to not have a unity, but I yet don't hear the full thing of unity in everything. So as we build our city and become more vigilant of what's happening, I think that sometimes we have to remove who's responsible and take up on the charge of saying, I am responsible, no matter what my position may pay for, because the community is at stake, I will step up, even if it's not within the range. But so thank you for your time, and I hope you, I hope I said something that could really be impactful so that we can have a better response.
Thank you.
The next speaker is, and guys, this is on this issue with the New Orleans Police Department, the chief has just been willing to weigh in on the other issue because we asked her to. Ricky Peterson?
Before Miss Peterson comes up, I just want to make the public aware, Granicus is going in and out currently. If you're watching on Granicus, please go to the YouTube channel, which is not having issues going in and out. So if you're watching on Granicus, please go to the YouTube channel because Granicus is having issues today.
No, Ms. Peterson, you filled out for the four, so I'll wait, and I'll call you back up. Okay, thank you. Any other questions from councilmembers? Any online comments?
Uh.
On, on the police department?
Yes, sir.
Okay, no online comments. Chief, any closing comments? Any closing comments from you?
I just want our community to, to not panic. We are, we want you to be vigilant, we want you to be mindful, we want you to be a partner to us, and we really are working as a team. I can speak for NOPD. NOPD immediately stood up, stood up, and we are here to support our other law enforcement agencies as we all try to catch these people.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief. Thank you. Madam Pluck, next item on the agenda.
We're on the same item. I don't know if you'd like to invite the sheriff's office up?
Sheriff, once your team is in place, if you have opening statements, you're going to, you can start with an opening statement and then we'll get into the inquiry.
Thank you, councilmember, I do. Okay. Good morning, councilmembers.
Good morning.
And good morning to the residents of the city of New Orleans. I want to give a special thank you to you, Chair Thomas, for your comments, mine are going to mirror those as we look at leadership at this time to deal with this incident. First, I want to begin by stating clearly and directly, the escape of 10 individuals from the Orleans Justice Center is unacceptable. It is deeply troubling to me as your sheriff, and I know it is equally troubling to you and the public that we are sworn to protect. As your sheriff, I take full accountability for this failure, and it is my responsibility to make sure it is addressed with urgency and transparency. Since the moment this breach was discovered, we have been clear, our community deserves answers, and more importantly, it deserves action. We initiated a full facility lockdown and activated a coordinated response with the U.S. Marshals Task Force. That, that task force also includes our partners at the New Orleans Police Department, Louisiana State Police, federal authorities, and many other, including our surrounding sheriffs. More than 200 law enforcement officers have been engaged in this manhunt. As of this morning, four escapees have been apprehended, and we are aggressively pursuing leads on the remaining six. While our internal investigation continues, and while we must respect the boundaries of an active criminal investigation, I can tell you this, there were procedural failures and missed notifications, but there were also intentional wrongdoings. This was a coordinated effort aided by individuals inside our own agency who made the choice to break the law. One arrest has been made, and we are continuing to pursue everyone involved, and that investigation is active and ongoing. As sheriff, I have always been transparent about the realities we face at the Orleans Justice Center, whether it's putting out logs of incidents in the jail, which you probably won't see any other sheriff to have done, or coming to city council and talking about our needs. This facility was never designed to be a maximum security jail. It was built for short-term detention, not long-term, high-risk housing. Yet over the years, we have been forced to operate without the resources to match our needs. We have submitted multiple requests over the years for staffing, maintenance and infrastructure upgrades needed to safely run this jail. Unfortunately, time and deferred investment have caught up with us all. And while we continue to make improvements wherever we can, the current moment clearly shows that patchwork fixes are not enough. As part of our corrective action plan, several OPSO employees have already been suspended without pay, more disciplinary actions are under review, and we are also fully cooperating with the Attorney General's independent investigation, and we have provided full access to all records, surveillance footage and internal documentation. We are committed to transparency and accountability at every level. But let me also be clear, what happened does not reflect the vast majority of dedicated staff who report to work each day to do a tough job with integrity and a commitment to safety. But it is a signal that deeper structural and systemic changes are overdue, and they require the partnership of all levels of leadership and stakeholders committed to public safety. This is a difficult moment, but it's also an opportunity. We are working around the clock to resolve this crisis, to restore order and to rebuild trust. Thank you for your time and, and questions and commitment to public safety. I look forward to our partnership. I'm going to turn this over, I'm here up today with Chief Jay Mallett, who's our Chief of Corrections, and our Chief Financial Officer, Bianca Brown, to provide some additional information, and then I have a brief closing before we finish.
Sheriff, I think the table has been set, especially in terms of how we start, and it seems like everyone's kind of concentrated on this area around notification, communication and timeline. And we've heard from councilmembers, we've, we've heard the concern from someone in the community about notification and communication, we heard from our police chief. From you, walk us through the exact timeline, and, and just to kind of set the table, I think it'll set the table for the other discussions, and when was the breach discovered, which OPSO officer discovered it, and what happened immediately after that?
Councilmember, I have to ask for your discretion here, but we need, Chief Mallett is going to go through that.
Okay.
You can ask me any questions afterward about that, but we're going to provide some timeline of the events as the investigation is ongoing.
Good morning, counsel. Because of the complexity of this event.
Talking to the mic, please, Chief Mallett.
Say, good morning, counsel. Because of the complexity of this event, the, the magnitude of what happened, and the ongoing investigation, certain details of the timeline, we can't share because we don't want to jeopardize the investigation. We can, we can say that at 8:44.
So timeline being one of the most critical parts of what we've heard from, and you're saying that you, you can't, you can't share those things, do they jeopardize the investigation?
Well, we're going to share with you notification timelines following, I mean, that occurred, we notified, I mean, was notified of the breach.
Okay.
Yeah, we're notifying of what we know happened. There's still more investigation to come.
Yeah, so I wanted to start by saying when the breach occurred, at 8:44, the institutional count did not clear, in which case, standard protocol at any jail, correction, institutional penal, penal environment, that you initiate a lockdown, a second, subsequent, third or fourth count. At 8:47, we identified that a couple individuals were missing, we didn't want to not canvass the entire facility. 8:53, the lockdown occurred, resources inside of OPSO was called to the jail to start a, a huge search of the attics, walkway, crawl spaces, other housing units, common areas frequent, that are frequent, and those areas that aren't. That happened at 9:30. Our task force officer assigned to U.S. Marshal Services made contact with his supervisor there to notify them of a possible escape. At that point, we began the search process and notifications were made in accordance to what Superintendent Kirkpatrick stated.
But when you talk about timeline in terms of the notification, can you address those issues? Because that was basically the foundation for a lot of the discussion now, is when was the police department notified, when was the public notified?
Again.
Based on your response?
Again, our task, again, our task force at 9:30, well, task force officer notified their supervisor, who in turn was notifying other individuals and agencies. We were actually inside the jail, continuously looking for these individuals, making sure custody carry control was taking place, and I believe, we, the sheriff actually made notification to contact at 10:38.
Councilmember Moreno, then Councilmember Morell.
Thank you. Okay, so take, so every, every day, the counts happen, you said this count happened at 8:44 a.m.
It was realized that at 8:44, the count hadn't cleared.
The count hadn't cleared. When do the counts happen? Every morning?
Shift change.
I don't, I don't know when shift changes.
Full after shift change, so at 6:30 p.m., 6:30 a.m., you have a roll call for staff, and then shortly thereafter, you begin a roll call for the inmate population.
Okay.
That count can sometimes take anywhere between 30, 45, hour.
Okay, so, I'm sorry, just, I'm not familiar with, with these times. So you said at 6:30 a.m. is when shift change happens, and then the count starts?
The, the staff roll call starts at shift change at 6:30, the inmate count starts at shortly thereafter, so generally about 6:45, the inmate count begins.
Okay, so if the count's supposed to start at 6:45, and you tell me it lasts usually about an hour, it seems that, was, was this count on this particular day on Friday late?
Yes, that's why, that's why I said at 8:44, it was discovered that the count hadn't cleared, which signaled a breach. So the facility shortly thereafter went into a lockdown status to search, to canvass the area, to go into these areas that's occupied and occupied, to see if anyone has, is in, in, in those areas.
But it, but it does appear that they started the count late, too?
No, the count was started on time.
But it took.
Again, again, like, the, the, there's an investigation ongoing because we are aware that there are some complexities here, there are some things, some security, uh, things that we can't really discuss without.
Because you, because you see, like, what I'm, what I'm, what I'm, I don't know anything about how counts work, but if you, if you say that roll call happens at 6:30, and then the count starts at 6:45, you tell me it lasts about an hour, you would, you'd think around 7:45 it would be realized.
That is one thing that we realized in our investigation, that, that notification to internally to the house, myself included, particularly the sheriff, weren't notified at 7:45, or somewhere around that area, that there was a deficiency, or at least in this case, the count hadn't cleared.
Okay, so then an hour later, it's realized that the count didn't clear, and then at 8:47, you said you realized that a couple people were missing. Did you realize it was 10 people at that time at 8:47?
No, no, ma'am. We realized that it was at least two individuals missing. So during the lockdown, a multitude of things were happening, and again, I want to reiterate that there is an ongoing investigation, and it's a very complex investigation. This is not a normal escapement, we don't want to jeopardize or mislead or jeopardize integrity of that investigation, but we do know that there were some lapses, we do know that it was some things that should have occurred between the time the count didn't clear, individuals realized the count hadn't cleared, and when they notified us internally.
Okay, so that's the other thing, too. So you're saying the countdown didn't clear. So when the countdown didn't clear, was it that the countdown was, you know, missing in, like what you said, a couple people, or was the countdown missing 10 people, or it was just, you weren't sure?
Again, we're, it's an ongoing investigation, they realized the count hadn't cleared, that mean, everyone that's in the facility and outside the facility, meaning like at a hospital or anything like that, that count hadn't cleared.
So then you said that now at 8:53, you went through a lockdown and a search?
Correct.
Did you know who exactly you were searching for, if at that time you were only looking for, I guess, a couple people?
At that time, we didn't know exactly who we were searching for or the number. That's why we didn't want to put any information out further than the institution, because we had to canvass the entire facility to see who was missing, it's 1,400 people there, see who was missing, and search the entire facility, it's a large complex, to make sure that they aren't still there. It was later on, after monitoring and going back and review, hours and hours of surveillance, that we got a number.
And that surveillance was when everyone was running out of the building? That video that we, that you all presented?
That was presented to the public, that shared on, on social media, that was part of the intelligence we used to determine that.
All right. I know I have questions, but this, just on this topic, Mr. Chair, thank you.
A lot of questions. Councilmember Morell, then Councilmember Gerusso.
I think the number one question we get asked over and over again, and I, I think it's why we're kind of harking, harping on this timeline, is the notification process. What is your notification policy regarding notification to public, notification to local law enforcement partners? Because the timeline you presented, it seems like at 9:30, the U.S. Marshals were notified. Why didn't anyone from the sheriff's office notify NOPD directly, considering they're like your next door? Because the timeline you presented, it seems like at 9:30, the U.S. Marshals were notified. Why didn't anyone from the sheriff's office notify NOPD directly? Considering they're like your next door law enforcement partner. And as I said, cited earlier, and this is no knock on this sheriff in particular, the way the sheriff's office is designed, the post-certified officers who can actually do fugitive search and recovery, they're far more police officers that can do that than you have available in the sheriff's office. So what, did you, when did you directly notify NOPD? Or did NOPD directly notify you first?
Again, that is part of the ongoing investigation because some of these notifications, I think the sheriff just mentioned it, were missed.
Okay, that is a fair response. I guess, I mean, it's a response. I won't say it's a fair response. It's a response. I mean, I will tell you that the, when I talk to people in the public right now, people who are terrified, upset, and angry, it brings to mind a line that we all know very well from when we were growing up. Average foot speed over uneven ground bearing injuries is four miles per hour. That gives us a radius of six miles. I want you to search every hard target, gas station, residence, warehouse, farmhouse, hen house, outhouse, and doghouse in the area. That's from the fugitive. I think that when people hear that potentially, let's say, let's not get into the part that's an investigation in the timeline, the 1 a.m. to 8 a.m. The delay between when your count happened versus when public notification came out is anywhere from two to three hours. That's a tremendous amount of time that expands the radius of where these people could be. And I think part of what, and I'm sure that is something that y'all are looking at when you update your policies, but there's a substantial breach of public trust when, when you look at the timeline, it doesn't just cover in the New Orleans area. People walking could be in the greater New Orleans area. I mean, when I talk to some of our law enforcement partners in Jefferson Parish, St. Bernard Parish, Plackaman's Parish, St. Tammany, your radius at that point of what you knew could have been any of them. And part of the purpose of not just having the Fusion Center, but as you know, you guys, NOPD, on a variety of different task force that cover the metropolitan area, there is a significant gut check from a lot of your law enforcement partners that not sharing information quickly exposed a whole variety of people across multiple parishes to having a lack of information to act accordingly. And I certainly understand that there is a desire to not have misinformation get out because you were still doing your counts. But if the shift change, as Council Vice President said, was 6:30, if the count was supposed to take about an hour, and then you're looking at, at 8:44, you're still verifying the count is wrong, and then the notification's 9:30, every moment that passes is more time to expand that radius, to make your job and everyone else's job that much harder. So I would certainly hope that, as we're talking here today, that there's going to be an established policy, the public, the council, all of your law enforcement partners can then look at that says, this is our policy going forward on when notifications go out. I can tell you, our chief is probably the most mild-mannered person on earth. I am very surprised she did not show anything other than anger that she found out from the Fusion Center when you two are adjacent to each other in the city of New Orleans. I mean, if, I know that your department, the police department, work very closely together. It is very odd for them to find out from the Fusion Center that you have a jail break. That's just weird. And I think it's something that needs to be addressed because they are your closest next door partner. You guys should be lockstep when something like this occurs.
Councilmember, you can respond.
I would like to address that. At the time of the incident, and when I found out really late, got to the jail, started getting intel about what was going on, it was not immediately clear that an external breach had occurred. So when we have to search this facility with 1,400 people in it, 24 pods, 24 pipe chases, which are the areas behind the pods, that takes a minute to be able to do. You also can't give out false information about who's missing. One person was found somewhere else in the facility, but now law enforcement is looking for that. That wastes resources. So we were trying to get that down. Now, did I overly rely on our, the partner task force system? I did, because that was important to get that out. We also had to pivot and start with our Victims' Reparations Unit, Victims and Survivors' Reparations Unit, and start reaching out as well to victims. So there was, it was a moving, it was definitely a fluid situation. We put out the mass notification to our partners, and then we had to certify who we're looking for before we get them going, before we send this out to all of our partners. So my priority in that was getting the facility locked down, finding out exactly what happened. There are 900 cameras, you can't look at them all at once, and they all take pictures of something different. So that was a process to get through all that, to get firsthand information that we can give out reliably to our partners. I did speak to every sheriff, or reach out to every sheriff after that. I spoke to Colonel Hodges, and I spoke to Chief Kirkpatrick as well, and took responsibility for not talking to them directly. But our goal at that moment was to get it out as far, as wide as we can through the task force. I did overly rely on that.
Yeah, but I think that, for me, the challenge is logically speaking, the amount of time it takes for, for example, the U.S. Marshals to bring resources to bear, even LSP, as you saw from their statement, to bring resources to bear, the ability for NOPD to bring resources to bear is exponentially faster. So I guess for me, I guess kind of what I'm stuck on right here is it would seem like the least harm would have been done and the fastest response in contacting NOPD first. Only because, once you start mobilizing federal and state partners, they're not all co-located here. I mean, when you look at the LSP statement, when you look at the resource they have to bring to bear, that's not troop NOL, that's troop B, that's troop C. I mean, they're bringing them into the city, but I would argue, and I mean, this is, I don't want to devolve into an argument, but when you're trying to, if you're looking for a margin of error, you're better off operating within that margin of error with your coexisting law enforcement agency who can activate resources and also stand them down just as quickly. So, for example, if you knew at 8:44, you potentially had a problem, it's a lot easier to call up NOPD, have them turn out resources, and then stand those resources down than to call LSP at 10:30, have them bring all the resources in, and then stand those down. Just, I hear what you're saying, and I hear that you wanted to use the network to get it out there, but it just seems like the least efficient way to manage the problem as it occurred.
We're trying to get, again, we're not going to argue at this point back and forth. We're trying to get out the information as fast as we can to everybody. The U.S. Marshals are the leaders in getting this type of folks into custody. Absolutely.
They are, but we're talking about 10 people. And we're talking, the U.S. Marshals do not, I mean, I appreciate, they are, like I said, the fugitive. They are the premier catchem agency in the world. But you have to get them here with those resources to do it. And I mean, when they get here, and they're here now, working with the whole, working with all the various agencies.
No, no, the task force is here, and all of us have people sitting on that. All agencies have people sitting on that for it. That's what I'm talking about.
So your position is, you told the U.S. Marshals, the federal agency, the problem, to then redisseminate to the local agencies for you?
No, we told our individual on that task force to get with the leaders of that task force to disseminate it widely to all of the partners in the task force, which is every law enforcement agency.
Okay, I'm going to relinquish my time at this time because I think we're just both saying the same thing. Thank you.
Councilmember Geruso, then Councilmember Moreno.
Thank you. Thank you, Sheriff, for your opening remarks. I wanted to note the timeline started at 8:44 or 8:43. Are we not discussing midnight to 8:43 today?
Well, again, that is under investigation. We don't want to jeopardize the investigation. But I think it's important to share with everyone that I believe we all have similar goals and priorities now, and public safety being paramount, and apprehension of these escapees and, you know, encouraging vigilance amongst the community. You know, we were prepared to talk about some of the things that we've done since this escape occurred a few days ago. And the sheriff has alluded to some suspensions and some arrests and the ongoing investigation. But, you know, the agency is working. We've partnered, we've had conversation with entities. The Department of Corrections right now is inside of our facility with about 10 experienced, more than 50 years of correction experience doing a security audit and assessment. We know, I mean, I think everyone here is aware of the limitations of the jail. Jail being a temporary holding facility, we know those limitations. But we have done some things in lieu of this event. We deployed and revitalized some of our staffing gaps. We know what we need to operate an effective jail. We know what we have filled. We know what those vacancies are. We know what the cost associated with filling those vacancies are. We have an emergency deployment plan. We're utilizing our special response team now to do more security checks, inspections, and things within. There's a cost also associated with that. We've increased security protocols, and we're in the process now of putting a second perimeter fence up. If we're going to operate this as a max security facility, we need a double fence. We're in the process of putting that up with extra layers of razor wire in the facility. So we've taken some extreme corrective actions and measures to make sure these things doesn't happen again. Again, the facility is still on lockdown. We've limited movement. We're doing more counts. Jail standards require one per shift. That's the bare minimum. We see now that because of this event and the infrastructure, that we have to do more of these. Sheriff mentioned that we have some employees suspended. I think we need to just go forward with what is required to harden this facility if we're going to operate with individuals staying a prolonged period of time in a temporary detention facility. Again, this is a jail, this is not a prison. Part of the correction action plan includes a $13 million plus dollar ask that we went and talked about for capital improvement. We started a project with the funds we had to develop a restrictive housing area that included hardening the cell doors, hardening the locks. We went with the Willow Wedge lock. This lock device enhanced can withstand 600 impacts of 200 foot pounds of pressure. It withstanded that twice. So we're in the process now of completing that so that we can put some of our higher-risk individuals in those particular cells.
Sorry. So you're proposing a maximum security prison in the middle of the city of New Orleans?
No, I'm proposing that we have high-risk individuals that are classified as high-security. And we need to have, if they're going to stay here a long period of time, we're going to have to have the resources, the infrastructure, the physical plant to keep them here. That's what I'm saying.
In a temporary facility?
Jail is a, jail by definition is a temporary.
Look, I've always thought when you chair a meeting, you kind of direct it, so I don't want to, but it's someone who's a little familiar. There's just some comments have been made about temporary facility, maximum security. Those are different types of systems. They operate differently from a parish prison or a jail or holding cell. So it's appropriate time. I'll ask for some clarity about that. I know everybody wants to get their good questions in. Councilmember Geruso, we're still with you, and I apologize.
Yeah, it's fine. So I guess, the reason I'm asking is, for the first time, I seen the presentation and you had up, is that there are statements in here in red, so I appreciate highlighting those to make it more visible. Staff failed to conduct proper security checks. Security checks were skipped or incomplete. Failed to detect early warning signs. And so I appreciate the transparency with that. I guess, when are we going to know what that means, though? Those are important, I don't want to undermine that those are important acknowledgements that we're learning for the first time today. But I think the what of those also, and the magnitude, is also important. So, you know, Sheriff, you said you have logs. Are there logs that are ultimately going to be produced? How long is that going to take? When will we learn the answers to what those things are?
Obviously, I can't give you an exact time, but we're working with, we are turning over everything to the Louisiana Attorney General's Office, who is spearheading the criminal investigation into what went on. We have also been pledged assets from the Department of Corrections who are looking at the facility itself for us, and working with Chief Mallett. In fact, they came in this morning to start working with us to look at policies, procedures, structures, as they have pledged to assist us as well. So we, the investigation is going to take however long it takes because we now know there was intentional, and we know there were failures. And we don't know if all those failures were intentional. So we're, that investigation, the criminal side, is paramount. And we can't do anything to, of course, to jeopardize that. But we will give that information as soon as we can. There were failures, failures in our personnel.
All right, but I guess, the logs, to me, seem like a public record. The logs, the logs that should be kept about rounding?
About what?
Rounding.
Logs, security rounds.
Round, security rounds. When will those be made public?
We'll talk to our partners about that in the investigation.
Okay, well, I think you can specifically say to them, the council is also requesting them because I think that is part of the whole notification issue as well. I have one last follow-up for now to Councilmember Moreno's question, and then another issue with what Councilmember Thomas raised. What time is first meal?
First meal is generally around 5:15.
5:15? Is there a head count at that point?
Again, you know, there's no head count at that point, no, sir. The count is at shift change.
All right, so.
Individuals all the time refuse to eat breakfast for a lot of reasons, you know. But again, because of the integrity of the investigation, we'll be glad to share that information once it becomes more available.
I mean, I guess, the reason I'm asking is because that's another hour that moves back. And again, what, look, I'm just putting all my cards on the table. I mean, I have no political ax to grind because I'm leaving 237 days. I think people just, not that I'm counting. But, but look, the bottom line is, I think people just want to know as much of a timeline as possible, and that's all we're trying to get to. We understand there's an investigation. And then, you know, the last thing, too, is, and my guess is, this came up yesterday to Councilmember Thomas's point, if the concern is that the jail is not being used as a temporary holding facility, but a full-scale security one, my hope is there's some motion practice with the court to alleviate that, or at least an agreement with the judges to alleviate that. Because my further guess is, the court, which has ordered all of us to do certain things, will not take kindly to the fact that it's not being used for its stated purpose. And I mean, I just think, and I think if you're not getting the help that you need from other partners, because, you know, this concern has been raised, in fairness to you, Sheriff, the cap is, what, 1,250? And we're closer to 1,450? We may need some judicial relief if we can't get relief from being partners with each other.
Councilmember Geruso, that's a central point, very central point. If it's a holding in a temporary facility, that's different from a maximum security. That's different from what happens in Angola. That's different from what happens in Dixon. It's different from what happens in a low, a medium, or camp facility. And the buildings need to be constructed or built accordingly. The House of D was different from Ten City. Ten City was different from the day cell or the holding cell. So at some point, especially given the fact that we've heard these comments about temporary in the facility, there's going to have to be some clarity moving forward about what is the facility, what is it functioning, and how should it function? Councilmember Moreno.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just some follow-up questions. So Chief, how often are there issues with head counts?
There are, I mean, there's always issues, but not to this magnitude. I mean, like I said, there's a variation of times that count clears. Sometime it can clear in 15 minutes. You have to understand that at this particular jail, I mean, particularly in the morning time, that morning count, we have a lot of individuals that have to get ready for court. We take about 120 individuals from OJC to the courthouse daily. So the count sometime can be slow because guys don't want to get up. So without getting to the complexities of day-to-day, the count varies when it clears, when we get people out, because they got to go either on an out count or an in count, particularly where they are. They may be going to a medical appointment, they may be going to court, they may have attorney-client visits. There's a lot going on at the crack of dawn.
Right, but, so you're saying that it's not unusual to have counts be off?
It's not unusual.
And when you say it's not unusual, is this, you know, how often in a week would you have counts be off?
I mean, because of, it's a correctional setting, I can't really say how often in a week. But again, it's not unusual that a count may be delayed.
Okay. So one of the other issues that you all talked about, and I talked about as well, was reviewing footage from. was reviewing footage from cameras. Who is the security electronics vendor for, for the, for the jail that, that deals with the cameras and that type of security?
I believe the cameras were put in by Cornerstone, I believe, which I don't know if there is still an operating entity. I'm not sure, are they still?
They're still currently operating Cornerstone.
Okay.
It's a, sorry, what did I say? You want to talk about?
Oh yeah, they're the main ones that are operating right now, those, uh, we partner with third-party companies that kind of come in.
Move up to your mic, I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
So right now we partner with third-party companies that kind of come in to help assist with those because any new cameras or anything we kind of install, they will interface with our old company. So we may use beacon technology, sometimes they come in to help in a.
Wait, 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 okay, so is Cornerstone the vendor?
Cornerstone was the original vendor.
Okay, so they were the original vendor, okay. And so when did that contract end?
It was prior to, prior to administration.
So then you all came in, who is, who is y'all's vendor?
So right now we have a vendor on a day-to-day basis. We have a IT department that services those as needed. But right now, if, if it's something that comes up that they can't service, we have to contract out. And sometimes we use beacon's technology for that. Um, they have approved list of vendors that they may use for specific needs at that time.
Wait, so you don't have a, a constant security electronics vendor at this time?
We can't afford that.
But here's, here's, here's the deal, and we talked about this, uh, uh, last Monday and part of the, the, the phase two and phase three integration involves replacing the entire camera system. Phase three is coming online with a totally different camera system that's in place now. The camera system that's currently in place is end of life. It's, it's either there or very close to the end of life. That's where that five plus million talked about for integration between phase three and phase two. So those two camera systems can be in sync and talk and have the same technology that the new, uh, phase three facility is going to have. So we don't, we have IT individuals that service that, but we don't have a vendor in place because we know phase three is coming on and, and probably in everyone's opinion, it would make a whole lot of sense to have a separate contract with a group of cameras that are out of service and you got a new contract with a company that's coming on with a totally different camera system.
Um, okay, so for security electronics, when you have a vendor, they usually not only just handle the cameras, but they handle, um, you know, like the door sensors and things like that. So who's the vent, is, are you saying that you don't have a vendor for that?
Again, that was, again, that's part of, and Bianca can talk a bit, I think that was part of her presentation, but that's a part of that phase two, phase three integration, they do take care of all of that. Uh, but that's packaged in a, in a, in a quote that Bianca is going to talk a little bit about.
Okay, so for the, for that footage that we've all now seen, where you have the ten inmates running outside, outside the facility, is there a door sensor there that would alert the command center that that door is now open? Some kind of alarm that goes off?
No, that is not an exit door, there is not ingress or egress, that is a door that goes simply to a, a pipe chase where the plumbing is, there is no, if you, there is no entry point except that one door to go into that particular small pipe chase. There's no sensor associated with it because there is no, uh, uh, there was no electronic, uh, I mean, there is no entry or exit. So people shouldn't be in and out unless they're doing service work.
So are there, I mean, for example, like we have ring, that ring doorbell thing, you know, um, at my house and they have all these sensors by my, by my house that if people get near the door. Are there motion sensors right outside of the facility? So you, like at night where people are not supposed to be like in this area, you would be able to get notified that there's that level of movement?
Well, we know their technology exists and I don't want to get into, um, and I'm sure it, all the vulnerabilities of the facility. Uh, but there, there are some vulnerabilities of the facility that weren't there initially and aren't there now, and we've identified those and that's why the Department of Corrections is also coming in to point out some of these security, uh, uh, lapses and weaknesses. Uh, but without, you know, just exposing all of the vulnerabilities of the facility.
I, I think what's concerning and what I'm hearing here is that like the very minimum basics are not there. I mean, the very minimum basics and technology are, are not there. And that, that to me is what's really alarming. And I mean, this is the first that I'm hearing that you all have not had this, this type of, you know, security electronics vendor who would be the one updating all of these different things. Like that, that's incredibly concerning that their very basic level of technology to keep the facility secure and to have an understanding when things go wrong is not there. And from what I understand, years before, it, it, it was better monitored. What about this, so if you don't have that level of technology, do you have patrols that go around at night to make sure that, you know, nothing's happening?
Again, Bianca is going to talk about that because those asks have been made. I've been here three hundred and twelve days and I know I've been in here a few times and those asks for this technology has been made, I think Bianca is going to talk a little bit about that. But again, we started talking about, when we said, we were talking about patrols, uh, to Councilman Green's, uh, uh, comment, you know, you start talking about patrols at max security type facilities, you also start talking about double-layer fence.
But there used to be a patrol that during the evening hours overnight would.
We still have that.
And that's, and that was happening that night?
Yes ma'am, and, and, and again, we don't want to point out too many vulnerabilities of, of the physical plan and the perimeter.
But I don't think that's pointing out a vulnerability, I think that's pointing out a deterrent.
It kind of is.
Don't leave because we do have people patrolling around the facility.
We have people, we have cameras, it, yeah. The, the, the building was built the way it was built and that's what we've been dealing with and we've been sounding the alarm about that. And if we're able to finish our presentation, we'll be able to talk about what we've asked for specifically, including the Monday before, uh, this occurred. Um, we'd love to talk, love to be able to talk to you in more detail about that.
Councilmember Moreno, I just want to clear up your question that you had about not having a technology company on staff. We, I mean, we have the staffing that are familiar, they are familiar with this. They have the certifications, they know how to operate and perform on these systems when they go down. We don't have a company on hand. If it's something that comes outside of their scope, we contract a company to come. And that's on an as-needed basis. But these individuals that we employ within this department, they have the capability and the skills that to fulfill that.
Yeah, I mean, we do too, we have IT systems at, at City Hall, I mean, everybody's got that, every business has that, I get that. But who is the company that's doing the upgrades and making sure that you know that you're high tech?
That hasn't happened, that's why we're saying with the new security assessment coming online, our system will fail in the next couple of years. We had an assessment done because phase three is coming online. That assessment outlines that the current system in place, it will fail within the next two years.
It's end of life, it's starting to move on.
It's gone, the life. So that's what happened, the system hasn't had, had the upgrades, it hasn't had the proper maintain, maintenance and things that it need to stay in compliance and be able to do all of this. It's just at the end of its life.
Yeah, so what was the decision not to keep Cornerstone?
Cornerstone is still the vendor, the original vendor, I believe, had.
I think that's who you said was the original vendor.
Yeah, yeah, so Cornerstone bought that vendor, the vendor that originally installed that in place. So Cornerstone is currently working on the phase three project. They're working on phase three and they're the one who did the assessment to tell us what's needed and what's not needed and the condition of this current, uh, security system that we currently have and how it's failing and how it won't be able to interface with the current phase three that's coming online.
Got, okay, so the vendor that used to be there, um, Cornerstone is now advising you on how to upgrade the system, but you don't have a vendor now, right now you just have IT doing the, the repairs to the system.
Yeah, we just have the repairs being done to the system. It's at, it's at the end of its life cycle, so, you know, to upgrade it, you have to replace it at this point.
Yeah, and we.
It's not upgradable.
And I'm, we also put forward the cost, which is four to five million dollars during the whole Justice Reinvestment Act where we were upgrading all the systems in the criminal justice system. Uh, it's four to five mil, I think it's five million now to, to fix it, but it was about four point one, I think, when we asked for it back then, uh, because we knew that two, we can't have two systems, it's got to be just one integrated system. Um, we put that again forward last Monday, which we think we have agreement on to be able to do. Um, and we hope to move forward as quickly as possible with that.
Councilmember Green.
Mr. Chair, based on what I've, um, heard, I would like to, um, reserve my question until the end of your presentation. But I do want to, I am going to ask you this at the end of the presentation. I know that a lot gets thrown on the city in terms of our financial responsibilities. Well, we made a conscious decision as a council and the administration supported to not raise taxes because of the crisis that was going on in insurance and other areas. So at the end of the day, we'd have to identify where the money is. At the end of your presentation, I'm going to ask you, what about the state? What have we asked of the state? Everyone there is on a state charge. The state has a role in corrections, a big role in corrections. What have we done there? And then I'm going to ask you also, have we applied to the federal government for grants? Because it's kind of alarming when you use words to say such as, we're at the end of the useful life. What does that mean? In two years, if you don't get the money, then the system is just going to be completely obsolete. And how much have you asked of us, the state and the federal government to assist in that regard? But I am going to reserve the questions because some of what I wish to ask may be asked at the end. But I am going to ask about funding that is a, in addition to what the city of New Orleans taxpayers provide for that jail. As part of that question, I am going to also ask, what can be done? The city council, previous to this council passed an ordinance saying that the maximum capacity was going to be twelve hundred and fifty. Of course, like so many ordinances, it's, the question is, and it's been asked, is how do you enforce it? But what can be done to get to the level of, um, inmate population that you feel is manageable? So be cautious because I will push back on releases, not several or ones, not, you know, no bails, no things like that. At the end of the day, the citizens deserve to have answers. And it may be simply that we have to get to the posture of having inmates, just as you have chosen, with these inmates as they're being arrested or as they're being brought back into custody to go to another facility, we may have to look at that. But I'll ask at the end.
Yeah, and I'll talk about what, uh, some conversations we've already had about, we're not talking about releases, we're talking about managing the system and managing the population. I'll talk about that at the end in my closing. Um, and if CFO Brown can finish her financial presentation, I'll go into that then.
Okay.
Councilmember King.
I, I'll wait till the end.
Sheriff, if we're going to give you a chance to try to get through your, uh, presentation, uh, there are a lot of different questions and there'll probably be repeat questions, hopefully not, uh, but we'll let you finish your presentation, please.
Okay, so we'll get into the funding request. So our past capital allocation, I'll just start from when Sheriff Susan Hudson took office. Twenty twenty-two, our allocation from CNO, from the city of New Orleans was thirty-seven point seven million. In twenty twenty-three, our allocation increased to forty-one point one million. In twenty twenty-four, it increased to forty-four point three million. In twenty twenty-five, at our highest population level, our budget decreased to forty-one point one million. With the current staffing levels and mandated overtime requirements due to staff shortage, our payroll.
Wait, I, wait, can I, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm going to interrupt for a second.
Councilmember Jerusalem.
Thank you. I mean, the budget book shows like sixty million or sixty-five million. I mean, and the CAO is here, so I just, I just want to make sure, yeah, we're, we're, I just want to make sure we're talking apples to apples.
Yeah, we are.
You want to make sure the math math.
Correct.
Mr. Chairman, um, what she, CFO's not including is.
Gilbert Montano, CEO.
Gilbert Montano, CAO, city of New Orleans. CFO's not, um, including in their numbers is the healthcare contract, which is twenty-five plus million dollars, which is also directly provided for the residents within the population. So that's where you see the delta. I'm happy to also articulate the, um, the spending trends. We've done fastidious information and research on, on obviously their budget in the last couple of days. So anytime you need me to address a question, but the delta there is specifically exclusion of the jail healthcare contract.
And the reason we exclude that, because we don't adopt it. The funding is directly dispersed from the city to that contractor. It doesn't flow through the jail.
But you're a beneficiary of that.
We can't approve it or disapprove it.
I can't spend it.
But I mean, but guys, I mean, come on.
Yeah, I mean.
I mean, like, what, what you're, what, that's like saying, my kids benefit from tuition, but they don't benefit from the tuition because I'm paying it.
I get it, Councilmember, but if.
I, I mean.
But if they submit an invoice, we can't say we're going to approve it or not approve it.
Can you run the jail without having the health contract?
We cannot.
Okay, thank you very much.
We cannot.
And just, Madam, Madam.
The actual allocation as.
Sorry, not to interrupt, just, I wanted to give historical context for that. Um, originally, the jail contract was provided, uh, to the sheriff's office, I don't believe in this administration, and, uh, it was not getting paid, um, and they were using those dollars. So the city removed that management of that healthcare contract. So it's not something that necessarily we, we love managing, um, as far as the financial burden, but it was originally in the sheriff's office, but because of delinquent payments, we did have to, um, remove it and pay it on time.
So overall, just focus on the city allocations, not the overall budget of what's budgeted in the other revenue categories, but focus on the city allocations, that's all I was, uh, referring to, Councilmember, the city allocation. So our twenty twenty-five, when we had the highest population, our allocation decreased to forty-one point one million. With the current staffing levels, I'm going to break it down for you, the mandated overtime requirements due to staff shortage, our payroll is one point six million a payroll. One point six million a payroll for current seven hundred and sixty-nine employees. Our quarterly allocation from the city is two point two million. We have six payrolls in a quarter. If you do the math on that, that's nine point six million. Ten point two million from nine point six million leaves us with six hundred thousand a quarter to run the jail. If you do that, it costs about sixty-three thousand a week to feed the current population, breakfast, lunch and dinner. Not even alone with the, the utilities, the clothing, and the other necessities that's needed to run and operate the, the, the overall, um, agency efficiently. Just last month, I think we sent in our March report, we sent in a March report, a summary of budgets, actuals and projections. On that report, you will see that we went into the month of April with a hundred and fifty-eight thousand to run that agency.
Okay, thank you for that. Um, to wrap up, Councilmembers' community, what happened like last week was a crisis, but the conditions that made it possible are not new. The jail is the same today as it was on Friday and it is the same as when we submitted our twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-two budgets. The conditions have not changed, but now the consequences are undeniable. We are operating under tight staffing conditions with outdated surveillance system, aging locks, blind spots, limited redundancies, and our current budget prioritizes safety as best we can. We're spending our money on what we, what is a priority right now, but it is simply not enough. What we're doing is reactive, but this crisis makes it painfully clear, being reactive costs more. It endangers safety, it breaks down the public's trust and puts lives on the line. I want to talk to, um, what Councilmember Green asked me about. On Sunday, I spoke to AG Liz Morel. She's not from, she doesn't live in New Orleans, she's not part of municipal government, she's not even of the same political affiliation, but on Monday she was here. She helped us get a meeting with the federal judge, the Department of Corrections, the Louisiana Sheriff's Association, and all three of those agencies pledged personnel support and the judge pledged to help us with anything that he can. Immediate actions, we talked about immediate, short-term and long-term solutions to deal with the jail population, which is way over the number that we, uh, per number of deputies that we have. Real discussions, we're grateful for that. Um, we talked to Chief Kirk Patrick, they stepped up, LSP, they stepped up, all sheriffs that we've reached out to and talked to have a pledge to support with their personnel. Um, but now we're asking for immediate funding. We need a clear commitment, we need to harden this, this facility right now, not in six months, not next budget cycle, but today. I wanted to say this last thing, I've invited all council, all legislatures to the jail to see what we're talking about. Some has taken us up on it and we thank you for that and many others have not.
Well, let's be clear, especially in a hyper-political environment. Uh, after this happened, who was the first person to make their way there to ask you about the particulars of it and what could we do to prevent it and how, how do we deal with the public? Who's, who, who was the only person to do that?
You, you, Chair, Mr. Chair, and you've supported, you've come to every time we've asked you to come tour and to look at the issues and you were the first and only one to show up, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, but I don't think that that's fair. Look, at the end of the day, I'm glad that you were there, but I, I, I don't think that that's fair. Because if you had extended an invitation to me to just do a simple tour.
You did tour the jail.
Oh, I know, I know, I'm just saying, I thought you were talking about since Friday, since Friday.
Oh, no, 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 I didn't, not since Friday, I'm talking in twenty twenty-four when we were looking at overburdened population and this year, and this year, yes.
But no, very honestly, there are some times when I have to defend myself.
You did, you, I said something did share.
All right, I want to make that clear.
You know, when the sheriff was talking about state officials and all these, and all these outside officials.
I didn't want to make a spectacle of going there with the media standing outside, you know, at the end of the day, I understand that they have a job. I didn't want to make a spectacle of going there with the media standing outside, you know, at the end of the day, I understand that they have a job to do.
Right.
But I would rather take that sort of additional tour with you on my own, I just wanted to make that clear.
You came, you came.
I came for a reason.
Yes, sir.
And I just wanted to make sure with all these state officials and others who were being thanked for showing up or being there, that there were some local officials, I'm sure others, just not to slight anyone else, but, uh, I, I was just defending myself.
Thank you, sir.
Councilmember, again, what we can ask today is, we, we're just pleading for a solution. What can be offered to us to get this jail secured?
I have, I have some questions, because I know I haven't been recognized yet, but I want to get-
No, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Councilmember Morel.
First off, how much money do y'all have in reserve?
The reserve account, oh, you're talking about that article that was released, going to fourteen point eight million?
Yeah.
So right now, we only have about six point three million in that, and that money is dedicated to sources. So I'll go through that list. We had, you all said that the agency had a twenty twenty-three fund balance of fourteen point eight million. We had accounts payable that was dedicated at four point two million. We had FEMA restricted cash, that's only restricted for capital projects, at nine point five million. We had seizure in a restricted cash account, has ninety-eight thousand in it. We had a due to department, public safety, these funds are due to background checks that we have to turn over to the public safety, that's had three hundred and ninety-eight thousand in it. Then we had a due to others, that was a ninety-seven thousand, that's money that's due to the district, district attorney, clerk of court, NOPD property room. And then we have a detail account that we collect, that's full, that had four hundred nine thousand three fifty-eight roughly in it, and that money is kind of-
Those, those numbers are great, but here's the problem, and it's an ongoing problem we've had, I would say, before you even got in office, since your predecessor. It would be nice for us to have that breakdown, and what would solve that problem is if you guys were in brass and we could see all of your obligations, we could see all of your contracting, then we would have the same information in front of us. Right now, the only part of brass you're in is when we pay for our details for our security officers. The reason why it's very difficult, and I want to be very clear, this is not just on you, the district attorney is converting to brass, criminal court does not do brass, but the fact that you are not in brass means we do not know what your obligations are that are tied to your revenue streams. And if you guys would adopt the brass system that everyone else is in, then you wouldn't have to come here and explain a breakdown of your obligations on that fourteen million, because we would know it. We would, we would, when we're doing our budgeting, we would say, this is how much money you really have free because we know all of your contract and obligation. So I'm not, I mean, we'll know, once the legislative auditor and the inspector general do their audits, all the numbers are going to line up. But it makes all of our lives easier if we're using the same systems to track funding. Because I, I have no doubt you probably have obligations, we do too, but we shouldn't have to come to a meeting like this to get that rundown. Does that make sense?
It does, councilmember, and I will say, you all get a monthly report with budget to actual projections that outline our revenue, expenses, and it also includes details of what's going on in the special account.
How much money's in your special fund?
The special fund account has about two hundred and thirty-five thousand in, as of today.
And I say that because last year, and I'm not, I'm going to defer to the council vice president to follow that line of questioning, that was a straight question we asked and couldn't get a straight answer to. The problem is, is that we, as a city, you are one of the many fires we have to put out constantly with limited resources. And if we know explicitly, like we're dealing with DPW or safety and permits, how much money you have coming in and going out, just like you have to manage your cash, we have to manage our cash. And if there is complete explicit transparency between the council and the sheriff's office on all of your funding sources that you have, and we know you're, all this funding's allocated, this is where you have legal room, this is where you don't have legal room, then we can have those conversations. But when we don't know exactly how much money you're spending, how much money you have out, how much money you have in, the conversations get real murky.
I get it, councilmember, but I just want to know, what's the point of us submitting this budget to actual projection report that shows expenses? It shows revenues, it shows what's coming in and what's going out, and every revenue source, every expenditure, I welcome the CAO office-
Until you just told us how much money's in that special fund, that question goes back to last year.
We mentioned that there was a couple hundred thousand in it, that's not, no way you run the organization on that.
I'm, I'm going to defer to Councilmember Moreno.
But I'm also going to say this.
Because she has the, the receipts, that's not, that is not true.
The law is clear, the sheriff runs it, the council pays, that is the law.
There you go, wait, wait, stop right there. That's the problem. The problem is, your position is, you run your jail, you tell us you need money, we give you money. That's the same, that's the same position that the DA has, same position that the criminal court has. And the reality is this, you don't get to tell us it's this amount without us kicking the tires and doing our own investigation as to that's the amount.
I want to remind you that the city has access to our current system, has logins and access to the current system, they can go look at whatever.
Why do you have your own system? Why not use the same system?
Brass does not meet our needs, we've told you this eight, nine, ten, I don't know how many times. We're going to put out for a new, it's an old nineteen eighty system we're using right now. We're going to put out for a new system that meets our inventory and other needs.
Who's going to pay for that system?
I think, I think it's in-
No, no, stop, no, no, stop. Who do you expect to pay for that system?
Uh, we are going to pay for it with whatever we have, if you don't pay for it.
No, whoa, whoa, we, we will pay for you to go in brass.
It's also end of life.
No, no, we will pay for you to go in the same system every other agency is in, because you want us to jump when you say-
Not every other agency is in.
You want us to jump, no, they're not, and they all should be. You want us to jump, when you say jump, you want us to say how high? If you're in the same system as every other department, and you have a need, and we can compare it with every other department to the same needs, then we can look at that accountability and make moves. You don't get to have a system that only you control to tell us what you need.
But the system is open, it's transparent, you all can access it, you can get into the system.
Mr. Montano, Mr. Montano. Point, excuse me, point, point of clarity, uh, since the CAO has come to the mic. Every sheriff that I've seen, uh, come before the council or negotiate with budget chairs, past budget chairs, when there have been questions about internal audit or the city auditing the finances, the sheriffs have said, accept the legislative auditor's report, Mr. Montano. Mr. Montano.
Yes, sir. Thank you, um-
In the history of sheriffs that have appeared before the council in negotiating with budgets and budget chairmen, when there have been questions about internal audits or the city having its own independent audit, the sheriffs have said, we rely on the legislative auditor, accept the legislative auditor's report. Is that the same process now?
My understanding is yes, unless someone tells me otherwise.
And, and why? Because city officials have asked for more in-depth audits, uh, studies of the budget, but each sheriff, I'm not saying they're wrong, but whatever the, each sheriff has said, we will submit the legislative auditor's report.
With, it's the law.
The sheriff, before Foddy said it, Foddy said it, Guzman said it, and I think you said it.
Yeah.
So why? And why isn't there anything more in-depth or internal?
It is the law, we do have to do it. When I got into office, we were two years behind on that, and we have now caught up, we are almost completely caught up. We'll get our finite audit, uh, final audit done, but, uh, when I got into office, we were two years behind on that. But it is the law, we're required to do it, and we do, and we do follow that law.
We do submit it, it's a public document, it lives on a public site. The audit is done, they, there are no deficiencies outlined in the audit, the audit has stated the facts.
To be, to be clear, just so everyone understands, the legislative audit report is the audit you submit to them and they publish. You're not being audited by the auditor.
No, that's actually-
No, they come in and audit us, they audit what we submit and prepare.
The issue is, when you look at Mr. Williams, for example, and how we're transitioning him into brass, all we want truly is to know how you're spending our money. You have your money, you come in, your millage just passed, that is money that you control, correct? Do we control your millage money?
You do not.
You do not, correct.
You control money, though, for the entire system, and it's not your money, that money is obligated to all of us. And if we had a more fair, uh, process for budgeting, that would be great, where we sit down and look at all the parish offices and our needs, that would be very helpful. The budget process, where we come and there's a couple hours of hearing, is not helpful for us. And we do meet with y'all on a regular basis, uh, the, as a part of the consent judgment, but things don't get moved along. So we, we, we have to have more say.
I'll return to the first point that I made. We had this debate, God, for the last two years about the new system you want. And to be clear, on the record repeatedly, that's the system you want the city to pay for. We have an existing system that everyone else operates on. I do not understand, and I'll say this, why every sheriff we've had, even your predecessors, do not want to be on a system where the two, where we understand it, the public understand it, we can clearly track expenditures, not just how, what your money is and where it's at, but also your contracting. I mean, brass has two parts, it has the internal audit system, and it has the contracting system. And the ability for people, both in government and outside of government, particularly with contracting and track it, it's a level of transparency that breached trust. When you're not involved in it, it hurts trust. I mean, the reality is, if you want us to trust your numbers, I'm saying, you want that, you want us to trust your numbers and budget accordingly, put your numbers in the same system every other department is in, and we'll trust your numbers.
That's fine, but you would also have to have additional systems to run parallel with brass, because we have a work order system, that's kind, that's tied into this, that brass won't be able to support. We have a warehouse system, we, it, it's responsible system.
Can you answer that question for me?
Uh-
The brass question.
I think, uh, Mr. Mr. Chairman, members of the committee, um, I, I, I'd, I'd happy to answer the brass question, and if you could also indulge me on some of the financial, um, discussions that are, that are occurring. We can comport, and I know our brass vendors and, and many meetings have occurred as a result, we can absolutely comport to the needs necessary for the sheriff's officer, uh, office. Simply put, um, understanding how the money is spent is not something we have access to. We have revenues, we have expenditures, at the end of the year, there is some, uh, reports on, on contractors, but it's, it's very, it's, it's murky at best to really understand. I get it's a totally elected separate entity, and we have some challenges and, and some authorities related there. We can only provide the funding, we do not have direct access to how the money is spent. Um, so to redouble down, to have everyone on the centralized brass system and everybody speaking the same language can occur unequivocally, unequivocally. There may be have to be transitions and change, but if a large, complex organization like the city of New Orleans that has many, many more complexities, because you look everything from NOPD to the fire to DPW, we are a plethora of organizations.
Mr. Montano, is this, but is this policy legal or jurisdictional? Because these questions have been asked for the last sixty years, the sheriffs. Is it policy, legal, or jurisdictional?
It, it has to, to be clear, the sheriff participation in brass would have to be voluntary. We cannot make the sheriff's office go into it. My simple point is, if you want apples to apples and you want to be treated like a massive organization, to your point, like the New Orleans Police Department, which has many, if not more, of the same challenges you do, if you're all in the same system, we are comparing apples to apples with expenditures, tracking funding, tracking contracts. When everybody else is on one system and you're on another, then it is very difficult for us to verify independently how money is being spent, how to track it, how to track forecast, the entire deal. You're right, Mr. Thomas, they can choose not to be in brass, they can choose to come to us and say, we need another system. I mean, you could choose all of that, but you can't in the same breath say, but you guys are unfair because you're not giving us the money we want when we want it, when we have a delay in comparing those two systems because one is apples and one is oranges. Yes, if you don't want to be in brass-
This is, this is, this is degenerated, this is about public safety, the building has to be fixed now, councilmember, it's got to be fixed now.
And have a more complicated system than you do, and they're in brass, and we challenge them on their budgets. We right now are dealing with seventy million dollars of overtime with Mr. Montano and digging through their books to make sure it was necessary. If you were in brass-
You gave it to them, didn't you? So here's the, the, the building has to be assessed and fixed. The building has to be fixed, that's it, we need that now. It's the same building as Friday, it's the same building as the budget cycle before, it's got to be fixed. I don't, brass is, is a distraction, the building has to be fixed.
No, you know what needs to be fixed? What needs to be fixed is somebody walking around as a person to go make sure ten people aren't sneaking through a hole. That's not a building, that's a person, that's a decision.
Sixty percent staffing and fourteen hundred people over the city council limit with no assistance in sight, thank you.
Mr. Montano. How much are you paid per person, like every other sheriff in the state, to keep people in your jail?
I can, I can speak to that, and I think there's a misconception about the fact that there are a, 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 a large number of state inmates in the jail. Ninety percent of that population is, in fact, pre-trial people. Right now, I believe we had seventy-five that they had escaped state inmate. Sixty-three of those individuals were male and were picked up Saturday, and we have twelve females that are state sentenced. We don't have, uh, courtesy holes there, we don't have, uh, uh, federal inmates.
Have you asked other sheriffs for assistance in relocating?
The sheriff, the sheriff spoke to that, and I'm, to talk about relocation, we've relocated individuals. We've done that preemptively because we understood that we had zero flexibility to operate and have individuals in the proper housing areas. We've done that, we've moved people to placavets, these are pre-serve, I mean, parole violators and things like that, because we don't have the, the, the capacity to keep long, long-term individuals there on holes, parole otherwise.
When you're saying pre-trial, are you saying, are you also including individuals who have been convicted and awaiting sentencing?
No, sir, that's not pre-trial, pre-trial, I'm talking strictly-
I'm, I'm asking to make sure it's a public, public, so you're saying ninety percent of your population are people that have, are being held before trial, these are like people who have basically just done their initial allocution and said, you know, I'm not guilty. You're saying ninety percent of your population is people-
Yeah, but roughly about a high number, I, I would dare to say ninety percent, yes, it's closer to ninety.
The number is important, because right now, right now, you're looking at-
We can get you a direct and, and-
If you can get me that direct number.
One, one of the things that you're doing right now is that everybody's comment is, so if a salient point or prominent point is made, the public's not going to be able to hear it because you all are talking over each other.
Okay.
If you could get the definitive number, the number is important, because if it's eighty-five percent, if you do the math, and our cap is twelve fifty, and let's say you come back and say seventy-five percent is pre-trial and twenty-five percent is state, is, is state people, state holds. That means if you take twenty-five percent of fourteen hundred, you're below the council number that's in the law. So having the actual number is important, because as Mr. Green said, if we're holding state inmates, then we have the ability to tell the state, we can't hold your inmates, you got to take them. We have, we, we, we have the ability to go to Jeff Landry, go to legislature and say, you know what, we're having problems here, come pick your guys up and send them somewhere else. Like, so, so that number is very important, because we can all speak with one voice and tell the state, if you got a state person, we don't want them here anymore, and make them pull them up. And that could really alleviate the pressure on your facility if we can get that number down by making the state take their people.
Respectfully, and, and we can get you that number, I think the sheriff captures this information, so we can get you that number today.
That would be great.
At some point, just, let's have a discussion about those numbers and what those numbers represent, once we get that definitive number.
I, I'll look forward to getting that number, I'm done, Mr. Thomas.
Okay, thanks. Uh, Councilmember Jerusalem.
Um, when talking about money, one of the questions I have is, what is the OPSO's bonding capacity?
I can't hear you.
What is, what is your bonding capacity?
What, the city, uh, state level bonding capacity?
Just any bonding to put out a general-
Right now, it's under law enforcement districts, so we can, we don't have, we haven't gotten an allocation from the state for bonding capacity as of now.
I, I, I don't quite understand, you have millages, right? Those millages are about thirteen million dollars, those are things that get bonded out all the time, so-
Paid for facilities.
Right, well, but I, but I, I mean, you, what you need basically is collateral, you need to have a source of collateral that is tied to, and then there's a ratio of like three to four to one. So I'm, I mean, there's a regular amount that the, the council provides every year, that's, that's gone up. Then there's a known quantity of thirteen million dollars. So I'm, I just want to know, as we're looking at money, because we knew money was going to be part of the conversation, and I also want to be solution oriented too, that I, I think it's a fair question, what is the bonding capacity based on the special projects fund, the mills, the general fund money, et cetera? So what is that number?
So a few counts have came up, I heard you all speak about the vending account, that, that vending account that is used, that, that's a portion of funding that we collect from, uh, vending, uh, from employee vending, the vending machine, our commission that we collect. That account has about sixty thousand, that account is really used for employee morale.
I, I get it, my, my question, just, my question is, what is your bonding capacity? If you don't have the answer today-
We don't have it.
Okay, I, I think, I think as we-
The bonding capacity is zero, I will, I will say that. The bonding capacity is zero, I will, I will say that.
You're, so you can't bond out against your millage at all? That would, Mr. Montano, I'm looking to you now, if that's okay, Mr. Chair. Is that, as the CIO of the city, is that your understanding of how bonding works? Because I thought we bonded out against our bonding capacity all, I mean, our millage capacity all the time.
Sure, there's, there's lots of financial structures that would allow for bonding capacity to occur. I think most specifically that Councilmember Russo is articulating is revenue bonds, you could pledge, you just need a pledge of consistent forthcoming millage or portions of a millage that would enable you to have a large sum of cash, similar to how we're processing the judgment fund, we'll be leveraging and pledging $2.5 million to somewhere to the tune of 40-plus million dollars. So I think where Councilmember Russo is going is that you can use portions of your existing funding in different ways that would allow for larger growth for some of those capital needs. And if, and if you will just indulge me on the financial piece as well, I do feel confident that the administration and the council has profoundly increased the sheriff's budget in ways, once again, we have no control of how the money is spent, but just to put in, in perspective, over the cumulative amount, the sheriff's office since 2019 has increased over $36 million, and year over year, almost $13 million, which would represent a 25% growth from 2019 to 2024. And if we're just going to frame it apples to apples, our police department budget has only increased, increased 13%. Our fire department budget, 24%, and EMS somewhere around 13 or 14%. So from a pro-rata standpoint, the sheriff's office, year over year cumulatively, has increased 25%, which is larger than any other public safety agency we currently have. And that's not even inclusive of the on behalf benefits. So although they articulate that there is a budgeted amount, the city does also pay on behalf of, meaning gas for vehicles, workers' compensation, employee healthcare, and that represents close to $7 million. And then lastly, and I'm happy to have more of the discussion with the CFO, as we evangelize our audits, audits are, are the cornerstone in how we can actually determine how and what money is spent. Your audit does show about $20 million in cash, and I'm happy to have this conversation as an asset, and about $14 million of unassigned fund balance. I know you articulated that it's spent to reserve, but the audit has very specific requirements as to what is restricted, what is not restricted, where a FEMA project should be inhibited, and where restricted items are. So we can only use the financial data that we have in front of us, which is the gospel, the audit. So I'm happy to discuss perhaps that there is money left in your audit that is not appropriately or as free as you may think it is, but I did want to highlight the amount of investment that the city has had over the years that we've been here, the increase of that investment. Once again, we have no control how it's spent, but we have put the money out there, even to the extent in a percentage basis, more than our other public safety departments.
I just want to make for the record, he's referring to a 2023 audit, we're in 2025. That audit, the audits were behind two years, that audit just got completed. This is the first year that the sheriff's...
We don't, we don't even have our 24 audit done. Everyone works off their 23 audit.
It's not completed, it's not due to the state till June 30th. So the 2023 audit you're referencing, we're operating in the 2025 budget cycle, the number you're referencing is from a 2023 audit report.
Well, we're all under the 23 audit, just FYI, 24 isn't due till June.
I guess, I guess, look, let me say this, I don't reference my family that much in chambers, but I know my grandfather used to yell at Charlie Fode about his budget all the time, because he came in with one page. So this has been an argument for, you know, 50 years, okay? I will leave aside, we've already had a great debate about just because you can do something doesn't necessarily mean you should. Let's put that aside for now. My question is, as your partner, as the entity that is providing $60 million plus for housing, for healthcare, for the needs of the jail, I think, I think it is reciprocally responsible for the sheriff's office to tell us what they can bond out and create a pathway to help the city in making sure that you're utilizing resources to create additional funding opportunities. And I don't think that's unrealistic, and particularly with the fact that there's a millage in place, that, you know, even a small amount gets allocated towards doing that, and that way we have a pathway for doing it. And I think sheriff, just my candor for me, like, I tell this to my kids all the time, when you got skin in the game, then I feel like I got skin in the game, right? Like, it's a lot easier when, when we're working together. Right now, you have your millage, and then the super majority of the money comes from the general fund or from the city. I just think it helps communications, we feel like every single monetary asset has been plumbed, and that's a big one that just isn't being examined right now. And so I think, you know, I guess if, I hate to give people, particularly another elected official, homework assignment, but I think a homework assignment is, you know, what is an amount of money that can be put aside, and as the CIO said, we're getting ready to do this right now for judgments, to the tune of $2.5 million a year to get to 90 million. So I think it'd be really good if OPSO could give us that number too, so that way we can, we can collectively work on safety and what needs to be done to jail, and then you don't have to come hat in hand asking all the time either.
Thank you, Councilman Russo, there's one last thing you want to say about that?
Yeah, I just wanted to make one last comment for the millage, so I appreciate those comments, but actually, all the millage, this will be the first time that we'll actually have the money dedicated to operating. The money has been used in the past to pay off the debt.
Right.
So the, the funding wasn't, the cash wasn't available. The budget has kind of struggled. And just, just know this, councilmember, I have welcomed the CEO office to come and meet with me since I've took office, as, as, since I've worked with, started with...
I wasn't going to ask you if y'all knew each other.
I've wel, I've welcomed them to come, to, I've welcomed them to come and see the building, see the issue, see the cost, look at the records, we welcome any audit you want to bring in there. Whoever you want to bring in, whoever you want to let them look, we're in full compliance. These auditors that audit us on a year-to-year basis, they're licensed, they're licensed auditors, they're working with a licensed firm, they submit this information to the Louisiana Legislative Auditor. We don't have any deficiencies outlined in our audit report. It's clear cut, we're doing what's right with the public funds, we're utilizing this money correctly. We can't, I've laid out the numbers, if you have a payroll and you're set up to get an allocation quarterly, how can you sustain? It's set up for failure. You got to give us what we need to get this jail in order, and we want to work with you. We're not saying, hey, we need, we need, we need to get it critical. It's, it's critical, we got to get it in order, and that's all we want to do. You can do the audit, you can bring in who you want to bring in, we're, we're working, we're open.
I, I, I think, I think one of the things that we're struggling with is, we supply more money as a city to the sheriff's office than I think any other outside agency, we do. And so I think it's very fair for, for everybody to be in a position of, how do we maximize what needs to be done? You all want money, we have the money, got it. But I also think it's equally fair for us to say that if you want to continue with either changing the jail, refurbishing the jail, upkeep of the jail, that the sheriff's office also has skin in that game and looks at what the bonding is. That's all that I'm saying. So I, I want to be very clear, this is not a referendum on the past, this is not a referendum on the accounting principles, this is simply, I'm trying to solve for X, and it seems like a very reasonable way.
I appreciate that, councilmember, and we'll take that up, and we'll get that information over to you, that bonding capacity. But I just want to make sure you all are aware, the, the allocation we receive from the city quarterly is really dedicated to payroll. The number is showing, it's dedicated to pay our officers, and we completely understaffed. We don't even have the minimal staffing we need to operate the facility, let, let alone afford it. It costs us $65,000 a week to feed those inmates, that population, the money is not there, is not, is not rocket science.
I, I agree, but it also seems like, we, we've talked about a lot of issues, if you have fewer people in the jail, right, then that number's going to drop. And I think that's part of the place where, again, we should all be partners, and if you have, and again, I'm not trying to point a finger at anybody today, but what I'm saying is, if you do have people who've been languishing in jail, and they either belong in DOC, or it's taken three years for their case to go to trial, then that's affecting you. So the bottom line is, like, the, the council and the mayor should not be responsible for funding the failure of other parts, potentially, of the criminal justice system to move so slowly, which is a point you all have made repeatedly today. So I think we're on the same wavelength there. What we want to do, I think we all want to do, is we're way over population, and that's for a variety of different reasons, primarily the fact that, you know, you, you have people who should be moved through on a faster basis, that also means that there's going to be a resulting reduction in cost. And so I'm trying to attack it every single way possible to help you all get there, and you all have said it too. So this is not a place where we, we disagree on some things, I'm, I'm going to disagree with you on brass, you all know that, but this is a place where we absolutely agree.
Agreed.
And, and so let's, let's, as, I, I think you all had something with the federal judge yesterday, I think you all return in three weeks. To me, this feels like the most critical component right now, because if you take the count down, to your point of $65,000 a week, and you get it down, pick a number, 50,000, 45,000, well, guess what? City isn't responsible anymore. So, and then for you, don't feel like you're pinched. So our common interests are aligned, and I want to make sure we continue that alignment.
I appreciate that, councilmember, I just need to know, is it any assistance that the council can offer us today to get these infrastructure improvements in place so we can avoid another incident?
Councilmember Russo?
Yeah, all, all I want to say is, I, this is just Joe speaking, okay? I am not opposed to that, but I want to know the bonding question, because, because I think, you know, if you, I, and again, I don't want to speak for the administration, I have no problem with fronting it if we get the money back, because you got bonding capacity to help out, or at least have some cost sharing, and also the reduction of people as well, and what can be done to reduce. Because I, again, let me just say this, I hesitate to be like, oh, yeah, here's all the money, and then in a month, you know, the population's been reduced to 1150, so we can't have that either. So I just, I think we need to have the necessary guardrails in place. Your plea is, let me just say this, your plea is very much heard, but let's all be reasonable about getting it.
Appreciate that.
We have former councilmembers ask questions quickly. How do you guys get reimbursed for state prisoners and federal prisoners? Who pays for that, the city?
We don't hold any federal prisoners, we get state, the state does...
Does the city pay you for state prisoners, or do you get reimbursed for that?
We get reimbursed for, for any state that we keep past the deadline, but we have this, we have a really good working relationship with the state, they come twice a week to pick theirs up, so that's, it's not a lot.
And while they're there, you're getting reimbursed for holding them?
$26 a day. DOC and parole holes, $26 a day, that's what we get per inmate.
Councilmember King.
Thank you, Councilmember Thomas. Real quick, I just want to respond to a question was asked, what can the council do today to give finances? I'm, I'm going to push back on that just a bit. As a district council member and all other council, district council members up here, we have projects in our district that need to be funded immediately. So it's kind of like Robin Peter to pay Paul. For example, we have DeGauld Manor in Algiers, which is a blighted asbestos-filled piece of property that needs to be demolished today. So we take money from the council's, from the budget and give it to the sheriff's office, we're solving one problem, but that's a bit another problem. So I'm just pushing back on that just a little bit, by saying we all have issues in throughout the city that needs to be addressed today. So I want to switch gears just a bit.
And Councilmember King, to your point, we paid the price when you and I met with the federal judge, when they mandated that the city build the new prison when folk were fighting so that the money could be used other places. They actually took money from projects and districts to do that.
That is correct, and we're, we're seeing the results of monies being taken in building of the jail, a building addition to the jail. But to switch gears a bit, Councilmember Russo said something, he said that we're partners in this, and, and I want to kind of stay there for a minute, we, we're all partners, everyone in this room, everyone watching, and a lot of the focus has been on the jailbreak, how did it happen, and who knew what, when did it happen? Again, I want to kind of pivot and just say that what we have, what we're experiencing now is the end results of pretty much a failed system, and, and here's why I say that. Speaking to Ms. Williams, Director of JJIC, four of those inmates who were, who escaped were at one point in time housed at JJIC, almost have. So I'm, I just want to ask a question, since we got the media here and people are watching, and I'll kind of be remiss to not take advantage of this opportunity, are we doing enough as a society, as a city, to ensure that our young, specifically black men, don't end up in jail? Because a lot of money is being given, you're asking for money, rightfully so. I'm not saying you don't deserve the money, the money's not needed, but we're spending too much money, and we're not spending enough money where it truly belongs. I agree the jail needs to be upgraded, but so does a lot in the streets, so does a lot of, NAR is severely, severely, severely underfunded. The NAR budget in Orleans Parish compared to the NAR budget in JP is, is apples and oranges, and they have a whole lot less facilities than we have. They have half of our facilities and about 40% more of the budget. So I just want to just put that on everybody's mind, are we really, truly trying to solve this problem, this out, this jailbreak? Or we want to really solve the problem of how do we prevent these young men who we had in our custody when they were in JJIC, how do we prevent them from ending up in J, it's not OPP, what is it? OJC. How do we prevent them from ending up in OJC and breaking out and running the streets and being a danger to our society? That's more of a question, not for you, sheriff, not for your team, but just for everybody watching and everybody in here. I think we, we have a bigger problem that we're really ignoring and, or we're ignoring, so that's my comment, thank you.
Councilmember Moreno.
All right, first, on the, the audits that go to the legislative auditor, so just so everyone's clear, those are audits done by a private firm, right?
Yeah, the one, a firm that you all similarly contracted with previously that did your audits for the City of New Orleans.
And then those get sent to the legislative auditor, right? And so just to be clear, I mean, those audits are, when the legislative auditor receives them, they really just check to see if your financials and your disclosures are complete. This isn't a full investigation as to how you spend your money. Now, obviously, because of, of what we're seeing, you know, you guys are asking for more money, the city and the council is saying that we need more transparency around how you're spending, the legislative auditor will now be coming in to do a full analysis and investigation on your spending. That, I partnered with Representative Jason Hughes, he submitted the letter to the legislative auditor, and the auditor will now be coming in, so that we can all understand where we're at.
Yep.
You know, what potentially you all could be doing better, what we could be doing better, and, and finally, hopefully get on the same page. And that audit hopefully will be done in a very expeditious way, so everyone has an understanding. At the same time, you do have this special fund, special projects fund, as, as we talked about, roughly $200,000, everything from vending machine money to rentals from when there's like a movie shot, things like that, that go into this particular fund, from the information that I remember getting a couple of years ago when I was talking about this. Now, monies from this fund have been spent on a variety of different things, including hotel rooms for different, you know, conferences, events, whatever. Since you are in such a dire need of funding, can you now, will you commit to now spending this special fund on needs for the jail?
No, and what the reason why is that we're, what CFO Brown just talked about, we have $150,000 left to use in our operating budget. We've got to have some money there in case there's an emergency that goes down, so we got, we got to have some money.
Have you ever used this money for an emergency?
What's that?
Have you ever used this money for an emergency? And I think that this kind of would constitute as an emergency.
The, the bill is $13 million to fix this, that's not $250,000, no.
I, I, I get that, but I think that just for public trust on how you're using this money, and also as, as we, the city council, look at how you're spending this money, if every dollar really matters, then every dollar should really matter towards securing this prison, securing this jail.
And we have, we've redirected our operating funding, funding that has been meant to hire additional officers and do additional work, we've redirected that to capital projects. That money has been redirected, so we put things on hold, we put hiring on hold, which has been a security issue to redirect...
But I'd rather you spent $200,000 to hire people than to spend it on going to conferences and...
I mean, they won't continue to hire, so we, we can do that and say, okay, I'll spend this to hire, but how can we continue to pay them? And you got to realize, we in a competitive market, we getting, the result of what we're paying is what we're getting. If we can afford to pay higher wages, we, we would definitely have a more formidable staff. And, and I'm just saying, as you know, I, I welcome the audits, I welcome whatever you're bringing in, I'm happy they coming in, they can support what I'm saying. I'm thinking, I'm, you know, I hope they can come in tomorrow if possible. We are ready, we're fully ready, we're fully in compliance, we have everything that's needed to move forward, we're doing everything correctly, we don't have any deficiencies, we're not doing anything wrong, we're doing our procurement process in order and in line with the legislative auditors, all of their recommendations, nothing's done under the table, everything is fair. You got to realize, we operating a jail, some things that have to go through normal procurement process is an emergency process for us. We can't have a jail with no hot water. At that point, we got to pay the special rate, we got to pay the rate that you wouldn't typically pay... We gotta pay the rate that you wouldn't typically pay if you would come during the day. We gotta pay the weekend rate, the night rate, that's an increased rate. You gotta understand, we have to pay these things out and get these things done and stay in compliance. And sometimes it, it puts a, a hurt on our budget. We, we, we're very conscious when making decisions and looking at things. We gotta feed inmates, we gotta clothe them, we gotta pay staffing. We have to do these things, and we're just looking for partner, we looking for help. That's all we looking for and asking for.
Councilmember Morell.
Thank you, uh, who is Louisiana Technology Group?
Louisiana Technology Group.
L A T G.
Yeah, that was a group that was awarded through the offer funding.
Okay, and are they doing work that Cornerstone would typically do?
I'm not sure they are. They were doing work related to like the GMS and all of that stuff that came on board. I don't think they're doing work now that currently Cornerstone would do. They kind of held with work that they've done already previously.
And does Cornerstone have any unpaid invoices for work that was done?
I think they have one for the assessment that they did.
Okay, and what, and did L A T G do the work instead, or was L A T G involved in that work?
I don't have those facts, I don't have that.
Did you get that information back to me?
Sure can, definitely will.
Thank you.
Councilmember Green.
I'd like to go back to the issue of capacity. Um, I wasn't on the council previously, but certainly, uh, council members may wish to comment, but there was a figure drawn up of twelve hundred and fifty as the maximum capacity. So technically, we're over that. We're in violation of the city council ordinance. You alluded to without specifics the discussions that you've had with others. I'm gonna ask you in a very straightforward way. There's gotta be an assumption that having an overcrowded facility is a danger to the guards as well as to the inmates. What are we gonna do about that? It's twelve fifty the number, and you've asked us to do something in the immediate relative to physical infrastructure. I'm asking you, can you do something in the immediate to reduce this population without putting our public at risk?
Uh, immediately, no. Um, we were, uh, one, a part of the conversation, which was a great conversation with Judge Afric, uh, AG Morell, Department of Corrections, and also the Louisiana Sheriff's Association was trying to find capacity. So, that, that's moving some folks, uh, around the state to make room. So, that's not a quick fix, but it's something that can be done, we think can be done. So, uh, those discussions are starting now, and we're trying to get a plan together to put that in place. But it's not immediate, that's not an immediate thing.
And even, and even with those type transfers, there are some hidden costs associated because we still have to pay these other places for housing. Then we got the, if they're pre-trial individuals, we got the logistics of back and forth to court. So, there are some costs, uh, that we factor in that's also associated with those type, uh, outboarded transfers.
But even if we wrote you a check today for thirteen million dollars, it takes time for you to be able to do the infrastructure improvements.
Correct.
So, at the end of the day, we're talking about time either way. I'm trying to not just be so direct and say, how long is it gonna take us to get to twelve hundred and fifty, which is the city's law?
Yeah, twelve fifty, which will still be over our capacity, a number of deputies.
Tell the public then, what's the, what's the capacity? What's the capacity? How many people are in the jail right now for murder?
We'll have to get you the, the exact numbers. It changes day to day, but, um.
But it's hundreds, it's hundreds. We're not gonna get to the point where we are at a jail, which is a jail, which is a facility that doesn't need all of these sort of infrastructure improvements that you're saying, until we address the very serious issue of what the purpose is of this jail.
Well, there's some immediate hardening of the facilities that needs to go on. Uh, we are gonna get, we think we're gonna get some assistance from the state with that as well. Razor wire and some other, uh, doors or fences. So, there's some things that can happen like right now to prevent, um, this from happening again.
Sheriff.
And then there's longer term.
I want to ask you, and I'mma be honest with you, I'm not trying to be antagonistic, but you've used a lot of conditionals. Is the state gonna do that?
I'm sorry?
Is the state gonna do it? You said that we may get, it's possible. I'm asking for this, what's the input of the state? We certainly have criticized, the state has criticized us enough. Everyone there is there on a state charge, and eventually, if they're convicted, will be into the state system. I'm asking you directly, as I've asked and I've brought up issues on this council before, what is the state's role going to be? Are they willing to provide you with any money or funding to get done some of the suggestions that you've made to us?
We had a discussion about that yesterday.
With, with whom?
With the Attorney General.
Okay.
The federal court judge, Afric, Department of Corrections, Louisiana Sheriff's Association. Talked about a number of things. We did ask about funding, what funding is available, is there something available from DOC? We didn't, we do not have, um, a number or response on that. But what was, uh, offered was personnel. All AG's office to prosecute cases faster. The Department of Corrections to help us move people in, in a time period. Um, and Sheriff's Association to get some sher, sheriffs to take either DOC folks or to take some of our folks, which takes a plan to do. Um, then the DOC also offered to, with some personnel to help us get the razor wire up. We still need to purchase it and get it there. So, those are the firm promises we had were for personnel and to help put a plan together to deal with, um, the overage of, um, uh, people in the jail.
Now, you said something very interesting. You said that at twelve fifty, you're still over capacity?
Yes.
What does that mean to the public?
At sixty percent.
That's the law. We came up with that law for some reason under, you know, a previous, um, regime. What is the capacity?
Yeah, with the sixty percent staffing, we're talking about probably eight hundred to nine hundred thousand range.
Anywhere between, anywhere between five and eight hundred would be, uh, an operating capacity that, uh, this particular jail, with the resources in place, would be comfortable managing.
Five to eight hundred inmates?
Between five and eight hundred, yes.
Based, oh, based on your present staffing levels?
Based on the present staffing level, yes.
We would need to work to get more staffing.
Yes.
Or get the population down, anywhere between five and eight hundred, uh, on an average, average daily population.
Yeah, I certainly wish you could get there. If we had fewer people committing crimes, we would be able to get there. I'd see every day the number of people who are going into the system because they're committing crimes, and it's just regrettable, it's just unfortunate, um, and I wish that we could do something about it. But at the end of the day, we do have to work things out a little bit better. But I'm, I'm, I'm asking for some input from the state of Louisiana. Not just the criticism, not just the criticism for the, for a city that has put in sixty-five million dollars. I don't care if it's health contract, food and everything else, that sixty-five million dollars that we could be doing other work here in the city of New Orleans. We continue to, on a city level, continue to put money into things that are the jurisdiction of the state, maybe jurisdiction is not the wrong word. Whether it be the maintenance of state highways, whether it be doing those things that are required of us that aren't mandate, that aren't, um, funded, unfunded mandates. I just hope that we can have a better relationship with the state. You all let us know what we have to do. Because the state certainly bears a bit of additional responsibility here if you're feeling that we need to have a maximum sort of security infrastructure facility here. That's all. I hope that they can work with you to help us to reduce the population, to bring it within city law.
Yeah.
Thank you.
We're hopeful, thank you.
And let me say this, if we have to have a maximum security facility, uh, in the middle of the, the city we love, where we, where we should honor, uh, and treasure our young people, then something's wrong with all of us. Uh, do the judges and the DA play a role in alleviating or eliminating some of the pressure uh, on the facility? Because that's, discussion has been out there, uh, since Friday. And if they do, what role do they play? And how can they help in terms of the count, the pressure, and the responsibility that's placed on you guys?
Yeah, absolutely, all of our partners. I established the jail population management unit towards the end of twenty twenty-three. We started drilling down on the numbers, who's in there, what are they in here for? How many state, probation and parole, pre-trial, misdemeanor, or felony? So, we're able to, and we put out a report each month, we'll be able to dust off the recommendations that management, jail population management unit has put together for all of the actors in the system. Because one of the thing, when I got into office in twenty twenty-two, the average daily stay for people who are getting out was like eighty-eight days. We bought, cut that in half. That is what has kept the population from being way out of control. Uh, because we were at sixteen hundred at one point last year. So, we are looking at efficiencies within the system. Every month, I think we take the entire, every week or every month, we take the entire population of the jail to court, so where the courts are open and functioning. Uh, but there's some things we can all do. We're going, we're trying to go, uh, as we upgrade our systems, we're trying to go paperless because that causes delays. Um, we're just trying to find more efficiencies in the system. And, uh, we've, um, we meet with the district attorney, I think, once a week, uh, once a month, something like that. There's a regular meeting where we show our numbers. We show those who are the most problematic in the jail and who have been there the longest. So, uh, we share this information, uh, we ask judges to take a look at who's in our jail as well and what they're in here for, take a second look at folks. Uh, but we have this information, uh, which is, uh, also crunched, the numbers are also crunched by, um, Commissioner Stevens' office to show who's in the jail. And there, and at, as a part of the Krasenov meetings, where the, which has a sub-jail population management committee, we've talked about just reducing the number of days that people who are already gonna get released. Uh, not those who are sitting for trial, those who are also gonna get released can be more, we can be more efficient in managing that. And then that will help us to manage those who are gonna be in custody for, until trial, which is averaging over two years, I believe. So, we, we're trying to bring it, be more efficient all the way around. And we have a number of recommendations we've shared with you, and we will dust those off and provide them to you again.
Okay, uh, Ms. Ms. Montagna, if you could come back to the mic for a second? We're gonna start focusing on, so the public can hear about, uh, solutions. It's been mentioned about coordinating systems in brass. You guys started working together, uh, how long could it be before the, you know, the sheriff's department and the city, how, how long would it be before, before they could be part of brass? How long do you think it would take?
Um, for the first time today, Mr. Montagna said that brass can, um, take care of our inventory. There were seven systems.
You've never heard that before?
No, because the, it wasn't, uh, available. So, brass would, at first, did not do that at all. Then they said they would take a look at it, and somebody from the city up on the DA said that they, I don't know if it was the city attorney's office, somebody said, this was at a last budget meeting, they would look again to see if they could. So, this is the first time we've heard that they may be able to do these seven other systems that are. We run also a mini-city in, in inventory and a number of things that we have to keep track of as well.
Okay.
So, we want to, look at that more.
This segment I'm on now was kind of following Councilmember Jeruso. We, solution-oriented now, we're not pointing fingers, we're looking at problems. How long will it take for you guys to get in a room and work out a joint system where they're on brass?
Uh, Mr. Chairman.
An estimate?
I, I would say that there, there's different parts. I think it can be done in the very short term as far as execution. The challenge with technology, um, cohesion is implementation. I think that is what's gonna be the longer-term aspect. So, finding the right system that fits the sheriffs and the city's needs in a way that we can both mutually evaluate. And, and I learned this significantly through their art project, when we had to have the courts on the same GMS system with the same CAD system, all those different units talking. I assure that there are systems that communicate far better than they did, um, years ago. So, that is, is absolute, that the systems can integrate in a way where we can have visualization. Um, so it just is a matter of a willingness and, and a participation to deploy that opportunity for these systems to mirror and match each other, and then execution of that particular software. And the long-term aspect the sheriff's office would have would actually be implementation of whatever future software would be.
Okay, so let me and the budget chairman know when that meeting happens?
Sure.
So, we can try to be as expeditious as possible.
And to your, and to your previous question, I, I feel like we do interact with the financial, um, department significantly. I know, I'm not sure.
Y'all know each other.
Well, I think, I think you're relatively new to this role. Prior to this was David and then Keith, and we met with them significantly. I don't know, I think, she, so the short answer is yes. I know there've been a few transitional, uh, movements within that particular department, but, um, committed and willing to sit down, meet, discuss, uh, really evaluate some of the, the, uh, the fund balance conversation, um, relative to those questions, and most importantly, and acutely, discuss the technology inclusion, um, so that we can have, uh, better understanding of, of not just revenues expenditures, but actually specificities related to that.
Potential solution, solution question number two.
Yeah, so I'll talk with his team regularly.
Got you.
Randy, Shelby, the innovation team.
Okay.
We're in conversation.
The, the federal facilities, facility, um, supermax in Colorado has soft spots. Whenever they, they, there are things that they would think that inmates can't do. We see the reports on Sixty Minutes about what happened at the supermax. But then there's a review of those soft spots. Since this has happened, what systems are in place to review those soft spots? Because what people don't understand, you don't want high-technology stuff at the door that leads you to the, to the pipe where they monitor how much water is flowing. That's a whole nother level of cost, right? Now, and if we get to that point, I'm, I don't know who will be able, would be able to afford a prison. But what are we doing in reviewing those soft spots, especially since this breach has happened?
We, oh, go ahead, Sheriff.
We know most of them, as Chief Mallett has, uh, with his twenty-five years of experience, has gone through and put together a list, and then we prioritize what we need to do. But, uh, as we said, DOC is here as well, and they bought a large team to just look at everything. So, we're looking forward to them, um, you, you, and we're sharing the information about, uh, things we can't talk about here that are, are also, um, issues with the, with the facility. Uh, but we should, uh, we should be hearing from them pretty soon about, um, confirming what we've talked about and maybe finding some other issues as well.
We, and we worked, I mean, we got, we've getting, getting conversation from the National Institute of Corrections, several correctional experts across the country willing to come in and do periodic reviews of our security systems and infrastructure. Uh, they have reached out since this event, and I think we, it's important to, 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 to illustrate that public safety is paramount and, and the cornerstone of what we do, so.
Well, 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 do we need a professional facility audit? Now, where we know.
Security assessment audit?
That, okay, that's been done?
No, we're working to get that done.
We're working to get that done. So, we can tell the public now.
Right.
Potential solution.
The Department of Corrections arrived this morning.
Okay, now, another question. It, it was alleged through the news that the person who was doing the count, someone went on lunch, and while they were on lunch, there wasn't any unaccountable. So, when we talk about labor deployment, the next time someone has a lunch break or a break, how are we looking at making sure that at least there's someone there to take the, to take their place?
Again, uh, there's an active investigation going on. We have protocols in place for that, and the investigation is gonna uncover a lot of the deficiencies.
So, that won't happen anymore. If someone's on lunch in a real critical area, it, it, there'll be somebody there to fill in that gap or, or, or to take their place, right?
Sixty percent staffing, you can tell. I cannot guarantee that because on a given night, suppose there was a fight, a.
In a high-security area?
Well, we, the, there are mandatory pods under the consent judgment as well. So, those ones are ones that we have to cover also, under the, our federal consent judgment as well. So, and then if you have to route people to the hospital or something of that nature, that causes all kinds of shifting in the system. So, there is a central control unit that can also monitor, uh, as well as those pod modules with.
Okay, so let's, so let's talk about shifting. And I'm gonna invoke a lot of responses with this, so let's talk about shifting. There are certain tiers, certain parts of, of facilities that are for different kind of inmates, different kind of charges, different kind of prisoners. If it, if it's true that these high-level offenders were on the first floor, how will we, we take a look? Should they have been on the first floor? Should they had been in a more secure part of the prison? Or, or should it, they had been in a place where there was more labor deployed? So, for the public, what are we doing to make sure that piece doesn't happen again?
I can, I can speak to that. Most of the prison is considered high-security. We have a particular open bay area of the facility where there is no cell blocks. It's a dormitory-style, barrack-style, uh, setup, and then we have cell blocks. And that's what we're trying to harden because we have individuals that, uh, have committed violent crimes outside of the facility walls, have committed violent crimes inside the facility walls. So, we're in the process now, we're trying to harden those with, uh, funds that we have. And that's the project that we had in place, and we, right now, are complete, at fifty percent complete on that project with our locks and hinges and strengthening that cell environment. Then we have the overflow, if you will, where we had individuals, because we got them classified, we keep getting individuals in. And, you know, it's a, it's a high level of individuals that are considered high-security. So, the goal is to get, harden the facility, make the entire facility high-security because on any given day, we can be at a hundred percent capacity with high-security inmates.
But until you can harden the entire facility, should they be in the most hardened section of the prison?
Since, since Friday.
With the most eyes and most systems watching.
Since Friday, with the, since DOC picked up sixty-three male individuals, we were able to move those high-security people that were on the first floor to the third floor.
Sheriff?[1785.22]
Well, there's, we have a classification system which decides where people go, and that is, it means we have to move people in accordance with it, and it's part of the consent judgment. That can cause some people to move in other places where we would rather not have them.
I just think right now, it's important to let the public know, based on these allegations and things that have been said, we're now, procedures are being put in place, not where we're talking about what did happen and why it happened, but what needs to happen. So, let's get even a little more granular, right? Counts. Now, different systems use different ways of counting, right? There's work call, medical, infirmary, court, programming, bed checks. Now, some of that federal stuff, it may not apply to jail or local systems, but how are we reevaluating counts just to make sure? Because maybe some folk don't understand, if you've got some people on court or work on it, it's a different kind of system that's used when you're counting who's in the prison versus those people who are on special assignments or in programming. How are we taking a look at counts now, especially for, to demand accountability, especially since this happened?
We have, we have changed the count structure to include-
And that's it, that's important. Sit for the public here.
We have changed the count structure-
Change the count structure.
To include more counts, particularly outcounts and the counts that's during the morning time hours. The minimum here, jail standards, is twice a day at shift change. So, we going above and beyond what is required because of this and basically a better practice. And so, we have enhanced our security counts.
And, and the reason why, first of all, you have to have some knowledge to kind of understand that. But there's a viral piece now with me from 1994 about a former inmate, Merkadel, who was a repeat escapee under Sheriff Fode. And if you have people whose jacket includes trying to escape, escape from other facilities, highly, potentially violent within the prison, then you want to have, you want to count them differently. You want to count them more often. You want to count them in a more secure spot of the detention or in the facility. Are we taking that into consideration now?
Yes, sir. I actually-
That's a solution.
It is a solution, and I actually walked into that, the sheriff had put in place, and we're going to start with that at the end of the month. A new jail management system is going to alert us to these particular type people that are high-risk, potentially for escape. We see now that we have a significant population of individuals that have juvenile escape records that isn't quite captured. So, now, this system will help us identify better those individuals, particularly since we know that they are staying in custody longer. So, that should come online sometime towards the end of the month, early June, and that will be a game-changer in helping identify these type individuals.
Solution.
Yes, and movement throughout the building or throughout the city, where we'll know with real, updated technology instead of 1980s technology.
And then lastly, my question is on deployment of personnel. When you're short-staffed, you have to deploy your personnel or use your personnel differently. But the responsibility of how they're going to be used doesn't go away. We see that happening with law enforcement all over the country and the police department, and you've been doing it since you've taken over. Who's helping you look, or is there some expertise within your staff that's looking at deployment of personnel, critical positions, critical spaces, to help what happened last week to minimize the opportunity of that happening again? Because we can continue to say, we don't have enough people, but we got, we got what we got. We have what we have. And how do we utilize that personnel in the best fashion to at least minimize events like this and emergencies like this?
Well, I can't take the credit for it, but the sheriff had a-
Yeah, take the credit. You're giving life a lot.
I can't take the credit for it, but sheriff had an emergency deployment plan in place when I got there. Take, we took a look at it, so we employ that in any emergency situation. That's why we were able to have boots on the ground when the breach was discovered to start to search the entire facility. So, there is an emergency deployment in plan, fully activational, and that encompasses all divisions and areas within the agency.
And then, and then- Then I say for me, Sheriff, because of this event, what assurance can you give the public that, you know, nothing's 100% proof, 1,000% proof, but that an incident like this will not happen again? What assurances can you give to people watching this hearing and those who are, whether it's their business, their home, who are concerned? What can you tell them about how do we make sure this doesn't happen again?
Thank you, Councilmember. We are learning from the failures that occurred, whether it's notifications, whether it was personnel failures, building failures, whatever the issue is, putting a plan in place to deal with those known threats and known security issues. Because this is, as I said at the beginning, and you said as well, absolutely unacceptable.
And what will happen to the people if it's found that they were compliant, complicit, or part of this? What will happen to the people who are responsible for this if they were, if they helped, if they aided and abetted in this situation?
Same thing, and that happened to our employee last night. They'll be arrested, held accountable to the fullest extent of the law, and there are going to be administrative penalties for folks, even if they aren't criminal as well. So, we will be holding them accountable, both criminally and administratively.
Councilmember Green?
Mr. Chair, I'm going to defer until after public comment.
Okay. Councilmember Moreno? Okay, we'll go to the public. Mr. Ricky Peterson, Mr. Peterson, thanks for waiting.
Ricky Peterson, 4555 Avenue, District E, and I'm not paid to be here. And what I'm going to speak on, I'm going to speak on as my experience as an inmate and what I've learned through my education and my transition to become a social, what to get my social degree. The first thing I want to say is that when I heard of this breach initially of the escape and that it was, it happened, it was seen hours later today that they had escaped at 1:08 a.m. on camera, but it wasn't actually detected till they did the first morning count, I immediately thought inside your eye. Because they are, if they're not counts, whoever was on staff should have at least been doing visuals of those inmates to make sure that each inmate was at least in their cell when they were supposed to be at lights out. And I assume those type of security walkthroughs would take place either 30 minutes or every hour, I assume, based on my experience. Now, once that, so that's why it's, and that's why you have an arrest of an employee, because that employee probably didn't do a false document that he or she did those walkthroughs and they actually did not. And when that security breach happened, when it was notified, once in the morning, when it notified it had a shortage of inmates, the first thing you do, you don't immediately go to escape, you don't immediately go to see, we got to notify the press and the puppy. You don't do that, based on my experience. What you do is, you lock down the facility, you do a second count, and yes, those counts can take hours to clear. And we were not even talking about an escape, we're just talking about this, you hit, maybe inmate was gone out on merit leave, or maybe they was transported and it wasn't properly documented. That's why you had that one incident where you thought one inmate had escaped and they didn't, because it was, it wasn't-
Yeah, very good comments. Thank you, Mr. Peterson. Everybody's got too many. Thank you. Great points. Ms. Rhonda K. Oliver.
Hello, my name is Rhonda Oliver. I live in District B. I want to say for number one, I did work in the Department of Finance and the Treasury Department, and I think that BRAS is a great system, and I believe that the sheriff's office should be a part of BRAS. You all are elected officials, the sheriff is elected official, and I think that in BRAS, it's transparent and the public, you owe that transparency to the public. As far as the gentleman just said, I think they need to get with St. Gabriel, because St. Gabriel counts less than 1,200 inmates in three minutes. That count better be clear in three minutes. I don't care if you're at University in New Orleans, I don't care if you're at LSU Detail, every unit clears within a minute or so, and the total account that's tallied by one person is clear. And again, less than three minutes is clear. So, again, I just think that the public should have been notified, not that it was an escape, that you think 10 people are gone, not that they are gone, that you know they are gone. Just let us be on alert because you believe 10 people may have escaped because the count is not clear. And then that way, the public could be on alert. If they didn't escape when you do your check, fine, but if they did, at least you can now save the names and you know for certain. So, yes, I do believe that the public should have been alerted that 10 people potentially could have escaped, so the public could have had their head on a swivel. And I also want to thank Ms. Marino for being on the news, because that's what we needed her to be. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Renata Collins?
Good morning, Renata Collins at 3701 Conti Street in New Orleans. First, I do want to say thank you guys for your service, and we know that this is something that don't happen all the time, but as I was sitting down, listening to all the things, being a person with limited resources, I don't always think that throwing money at the situation is a thing. I consider how the people was not managed to be watched. Like, how do we not have that part in operation? We are relying so much on computers and technology that we're not effectively doing the city or the people or the constituents a good job. So, instead of saying, hey, let's throw more computers at things, let's throw more automation at things, we need to be more hands-on. I think that is one of the biggest disconnects. In addition to the lack of unity, because at the end of the day, we all do deserve to have unity as we are considering a whole lot of things. I wish I had the time to explain on everything that I heard, because there's a lot of deficiencies that is definitely present. At the end of the day, we do want to be able to know that we're able to account on you guys, because we're able to get in and out of our calls thinking that you guys have our best interest and that we're going to be notified effectively and thoroughly. I also heard the sheriff says about the law. Now, I consider, because I hear a lot of people who tell us that they're in jail for 14 months, way too long, and they haven't even had a trial. So, while we're talking about the law, let's give the people the rights to the due process. Let's get the people in and out in a timely fashion so that we could do that. Let's get the boots on the ground so that you guys could be able to work within the capacity according to what you guys say that is law. And let's hold those people accountable as they are. And I believe that once we've unified effectively and together, we will do great. Thank you for your time, and I hope I had more time to explain. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Any online comments?
Yeah, we had two online comments. The first one is from Cliff Dugar. He says, clearly this was an inside and outside job. I've seen the sheriff before the council sounding like alarm, sounding like alarm about the locks designed of the jail may empower concern. She definitely helped save Mardi Gras with her efforts of voluntary help and reaching out to other jurisdictions. Someone had to pay whomever assisted in this jailbreak and getaway, cutting bars close and knowledge of the facility to get out that quickly. The timing of this is definitely suspect. And Jim Johnson comments, there was talk of the jailbreak being an inside job realistically. Are corrections officers paid enough to avoid bribery being a common issue? In the military, the most common reason for a security clearance being denied is financial difficulty. In a perfect world, everyone has integrity. In the real world, bills have to be paid.
Councilmember Green?
Mr. Chair, I just, this is certainly a controversial issue, and it's a public safety issue, but I want to look at the members of the Orleans Parish Sheriff's Office who were in the first row, and I want to talk to the hundreds, the hundreds of officers in the correction system who work. I just want to let you all know that we see the challenges, beyond the challenges that we're talking about today. You all deal with people who are hardened criminals, who come there many times with attitudes of disagreement with the system, who take it out on the system, who take it out on you all. It was not just a tour that I went on, but it was an opportunity to talk to some of you all. And at the end of the day, it's going to be, certainly, this is a big story, and it should be a story. We need to get those six people who are still out there. We need to find out who their accomplice, who their accomplices were. We need to focus on that. But I think that we need to also recognize the fact that on a day-to-day basis, members of the correction system deal with some very challenging issues, challenging issues. I've seen them on videotape. I've unfortunately seen a murder on tape. At the end of the day, you have a very, very difficult job, and we want your help, we want your input, we want you to work with the sheriff's office and to suggest to the council, based on your experience, what we may do. But we can't get lost in the fact that on a day-to-day basis, members of our community, our law enforcement community, our correction staff, put themselves at risk too, and many times have to respond to emergencies, deal with people who have challenges, mental challenges, who have societal challenges, who have personal challenges, who are hardened, very honestly as we see. So, I just don't want us to leave here not saying to the members of the correction staff, the members of the sheriff's office who do the day-to-day work, that we appreciate your work. Thank you.
Sheriff?
For that, thank you.
Sheriff, any closing comments?
Thank you for this opportunity. I do want to be partners. I thank you for that. We do want to move forward as expeditiously as possible. We will look at all the things you've asked us to look at, and we ask that you do the same for what we've raised, the questions and issues we've raised.
Well, first of all, thank you, guys. I want to thank everyone who participated, my colleagues. I think at the end of the day, everyone wants the same thing. We want a safe New Orleans, and we want a community that trusts the institutions. But the one thing we know about this, this is a lot bigger and larger than just a hole in the wall. This is about a system, and how do we fix a system that's been broken for far too long? And how do we fix a city and make it a city that works for all of us? So, based on everything we've heard today from our budget chairman, our CAO, you and your experts, and our colleagues, I think it's time for us to get in a room, address those budget issues, address those security issues, address those management and deployment issues, and talk about how do we not only make sure this doesn't happen again, but how do we produce systems where the people can actually believe that those systems are working for them? So, I want to thank everybody. I need a motion to adjourn.
So, move.
Move second?
Thank you.
All in favor?
All right.